All right, hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Bradley Gotchel. I am the Lower Paxton Township Manager. In typical fashion, I'm going to give a brief summary of this evening's agenda, particularly for the benefit of those who may be watching at home as everyone gets settled in this evening. This is a workshop session of the Board. They have a number of items on the agenda. First, to include a public hearing on the matter of the newly-created Township Bureau of Fire. We have the room set up, obviously, a little differently this evening. We're going to hear from a number of guests, to include our Public Safety Director, Mr. Kosheba, as well as the Deputy Chief of Fire, Brett Graham, and then also representatives from each of the fire companies, Colonial Park, Lingelstown, and Paxtonia. And the Board will then commence with a number of questions and remarks. After that following, there will be a presentation of Ordinance 2025-01, which is the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance Amendment. Then, following along that line, the Board will hear a presentation of Ordinance 25-05, which likewise, and separately but in the same vein, authorizes the amendment to the Township Comprehensive Plans Land Use Map. Then, following that, the Board will reorganize, a holdover from last week's agenda, hear any last announcements, and then finally make a motion to adjourn. With all that said, members of the Board are seated and prepared to conduct business. Thank you very much.
According to the agenda, we will first have public comment. Public comment is for any item not on the agenda. If you come to the podium, you need to state your name and your address and the subject you wish to speak about. Comments will be limited to five minutes. You have a comment?
Good evening, Board and Staff. My name is Bill Mitzker. I have two non-agenda items I'd like to present, but first, to save some time later during our commenting time on the fire service, I'd like to give a couple items of disclosure so I can save some time. My name, again, is Bill Mitzker. I live at 5956 Lingelstown Road on the square. I have been a seventy-eight-and-a-half-year resident of our township and of Lingelstown. I have been, since about the age of sixteen, a promoter of not only our township but also of Lingelstown, which some of you are aware of. Starting at the age of sixteen, I was your historian, twice, for the Lingelstown Bicentennial in sixty-five, and then, two years later, for the Township's Bicentennial in sixty-seven. I have been active in promoting this township and the village of Lingelstown especially all through that time. Currently, I serve on two of your boards. I have, in regard to the Lingelstown Fire Company, I have been a member since February of nineteen sixty-six, so within a short period of time, I will have sixty years of active service with an organization in this township, which I would like to tell you more about a little bit later. I have been the Recording Secretary, first elected in the nineteen-seventy administrative year. I still serve in that position, and I have watched this organization develop over that sixty-year period, of which I would like to tell you more about later. I have responded as an active firefighter until my last call on March the seventh, two thousand twenty. I answered, at that point, four thousand eight hundred and sixty-six alarms. I know the fire service. I know this township, and there are some things I would like to tell you about that I don't hear being mentioned, and I'll come back later with that in mind. So, now, two items, very quickly, that have nothing to do with the agenda. First of all, the month of May is Pet Appreciation Month, and you would be aware, I think, that last year, a year from this month, the Kiwanis Club of Lingelstown Area conducted a project to build a dog kennel holding building behind the maintenance building off of Locust Lane. It has been one year since we dedicated that building for holding stray dogs until either their owners are found or they go to the Humane Society. The Kiwanis Club of Lingelstown, and Mr. Miller, I laid an envelope there for you, the Kiwanis Club of Lingelstown, in honor and appreciation for this one year now that has gone by and celebration for that time, is giving a one-hundred-dollar donation, a gift check, to the feed store on Old Jones Town Road to provide funding for purchasing dog food and supplies and things like that. So, we wanted you to have that donation. And secondly, my second item, last Wednesday was the annual firefighter-police EMS first-responder activity at Doffin County Heroes Grove, and I was in the process of talking to one of our retired police officers who was there, and I commented to him about, I was kind of disappointed that there was not a big public attendance at the event this year, as opposed to other years. And he looked at me and he said, "Well, I'm not surprised," and he showed me on his phone a message that came out from somewhere, from someone in the township, stating that this event was not a public event, and not was capitalized. I don't know where that came from. It's totally wrong, and I think you would all agree to that, but somewhere there was a miscommunication with a notice that went out to the public that that event last Wednesday was not an event for the public. So, maybe Brad, you can check, or someone, to see that that doesn't happen in the future, because that event is very much designed, as you all know, to recognize our first responders and also do this in front of the public. So, I just mention this so that maybe somebody can check on this, that it doesn't happen again. Thank you. I'll be back later.
Mr. Mitzker, I just want to say that the Kiwanis Club was absolutely instrumental in the upgrade of the kennel, and I commend your club for doing so. Are there other public comments?
I'm going to stand over here because I'm short, and this is where I have to go. Did not realize it would be crowded. I'll try and make this brief. I'll talk faster than normal. My name is Kate Scheib. My address is 131 Oak Park Road, Healy, Moonee. And what I'd like to do briefly is give you a little...
Kate, I apologize. They're having trouble hearing you through the mic.
Well, then, I will stand here, and there we go. My name is still Kate Scheib. I live at 131 Oak Park Road, here in Lower Paxton Township. And tonight, in order to get the answer that I'm hoping to, I just want to give you a little brief background, a little history. I have one question for our solicitor, and depending on the answer to that question, possibly a request for the Board of Supervisors. As some people in the room know, but other people don't know me, I've spent a lot of my life serving in different government capacities. Since I was a teenager, this is what I do. I think it's now called a moral ambition, I believe, is community service. I have been an elected official. I have sat and been appointed to a number of boards. I've worked hard as a volunteer on different agencies, and the reason that I'm saying that is I have significant experience in processes and procedures of the way that government operates. I come to these meetings. I come to planning commission meetings. I go to the recreation meetings, partially to hear what's going on in the community, partially to see how our government officials are dealing with what's going on in the community, but also I have a vested interest in how are things running and why do they run the way that they do. Doesn't matter whether it's here in Lower Paxton or anyplace. It's a passion of mine. So, to put that into perspective, I am here this evening regarding a procedural issue that came up in March that I needed to step back and take a look at before I brought it to the Board. I wanted to wait until the entire Board was seated, because, as you know, don't have to tell you, we've gone through some appointment processes, and I just think this is an important For those that may not be aware, a quorum of the Board of Supervisors is three supervisors. So, the minimum the Board can meet with, as you guys know, is three supervisors in order to conduct business. At the beginning of March, the Board of Supervisors had three supervisors on it, so they did represent a quorum, so they met. At that particular meeting, a motion was put forward in which two supervisors agreed to the motion and one supervisor disagreed to the motion. The question was then posed to Solicitor Madden, who was not present at that meeting but was reachable by phone, what constitutes a majority vote when a quorum is present in the Board of Supervisors? The phone was put on speakerphone. The solicitor rendered her professional opinion that a majority of the quorum was what was needed in order to move the motion forward. So, the Board acted on that advice, moved the motion forward, and the meeting proceeded. Well, moved to the next week. The next week, there must have been some discussion midweek about this particular voting procedure, because the solicitor then opened the meeting by saying, while she stood behind her decision that a majority of a quorum represented enough votes to move a motion forward, she didn't want to put the township at risk to have to go through a legal proceeding that might cause expense and time and maybe even some hard feelings. So, she recommended at that meeting that the prior week's motion be rescinded. Three members were sitting on the Board. There was a quorum present. Well, actually, there were four members, but because of what the motion was, three members were sitting on the Board. There was a quorum present. Excuse me.
Ms. Scheib, you're at four and a half minutes, so please wrap it up.
Okay. I'll make it soon. You want me to go fast? I'll go faster. All three people voted to rescind the motion. However, Solicitor Madden qualified her, "I stand behind my decision with the, given the circumstances." Okay? Given the circumstances, you cannot qualify a decision when you give the Board of Supervisors how to vote. So, that piqued my curiosity, because, like I said, I'm all about process and procedure. So, I went and I did some research, and my question to Solicitor Madden this evening is, how many votes are required to move a motion forward when there's a quorum of supervisors sitting at this podium?
Respectfully, Ms. Scheib, I'm not going to litigate this issue from the dais. As the Board stands currently, there are five members, which means you need three positive votes to move any decision forward, as of this evening.
Okay. I find that insufficient. So, here comes my request to the Board of Supervisors.
You've exceeded your five minutes, Ms. Scheib.
I'm not commenting anymore. I'm making a citizen request to the Board of Supervisors. In accordance with Article 11, Section, I think it's two thousand and three, the Board can request a written opinion from their solicitor regarding a legal issue.
We will take that under advisement. Thank you very much for your recommendation.
I am requesting, and I would like to be informed, then, on what the Board has decided, and when that issue is resolved, I would like to know how that's resolved. And I'll just give you a heads-up, okay? I have the appellate court decision, and you're wrong. Okay? So, it's right here in my pocket if anybody needs to see it. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Scheib.
Is there any other public comment? Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, we will move forward with comments from the Board of Supervisors. Do we have any comments from the Board?
So, last week, I attended the Heroes Grove. Let me get my notes. We had the Heroes Grove Awards Night Ceremony for the firefighters and the EMT employees. I didn't have an opportunity to express my feelings about the service, so I will do so tonight. I would like to say first how grateful I am that the people employed in these professions here in Lower Paxton Township have used their time, their talent, and their abilities to the benefit of the Lower Paxton Township residents. We are blessed to have such a quality public service department, and I want to simply express my appreciation for those individuals that work here in this particular field. Thank you very much.
Do we have other Board comments? Hearing none, managers' report.
Mr. Chair, members of the Board, I have no official report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Gotchel. We'll move to the public hearing on the matter of the newly-created Township Bureau of Fire. We will start with Public Safety Director Kosheba and Deputy Chief Fire Graham. Gentlemen?
Members of the Board, our volunteers here and guests and those at home, thank you for having the opportunity to come here and give you a little bit of backstory on what is going on with your emergency services, particularly the Bureau of Fire and our cooperating fire companies here. So, just a quick background on myself. I have forty years in the fire service, twenty-two years of which are of a volunteer capacity as a fire chief. All those other years were firefighter and many other positions. I have twenty-six years in EMS and thirty-two years in law enforcement. I was fortunate enough to be chosen as your Public Safety Director in March of two thousand and eighteen. Very immediately after that, it became apparent through some meetings and some issues that we needed to quickly address some of the things that were going on, operational guidelines and reporting issues and that sort of things, and get working together. With that said, the Board of Supervisors at that particular time expressed an interest to begin to prepare a township-wide set of standard operating guidelines, general orders, whatever word you choose to use for them. As we continued to work in that direction, it became immediately apparent to me that we needed an outside agency to give outside opinions as to what an organizational assessment needs to be for our emergency services. And I presented that through an RFP and was ultimately agreed upon through the Board, and the Municipal Resources Incorporated, MRI, came in and conducted that study. And one of the key recommendations in the study very early on was for the township to hire a Deputy Chief of Fire or oversee the operations side of the fire service on a day-to-day basis. We had put together a Board of Professionals from the area, from the fire service, and the selection process was gone through, and we, at that particular time, picked Deputy Chief Graham to be that individual, that change agent that we needed to prepare our township for what eventually will be a combination department. And I have to say, before turning it over to Deputy Graham, this man has worked tirelessly to get things done on the operations side and has worked tirelessly with the individuals seated at these tables, the leaders of these organizations, Colonial Park, Paxtonia, and Lingelstown, and I think he continues to do a great job, and we probably now see some of the best cooperation that has ever occurred in this township as a direct result of having an operational division chief overseeing these things. So, with that, I'll pass the mic over to Deputy Chief Graham. He can fill you in on his tenure here and where we have been and where we are going.
Good evening, members of the Board, residents of Lower Paxton Township and our volunteers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight on this important topic. For those who do not know me, as the Director said, my name is Brett Graham, and I have the honor of serving as the township's first Deputy Fire Chief, a role I was appointed to in January of two thousand twenty-three. Since that time, the Director and I have worked in close partnership with our three volunteer fire companies to implement the recommendations issued by the MRI study, which include unifying our collective mission, establishing shared operational policies, and setting performance benchmarks aligned with nationally-recognized standards. In just a short two-and-a-half years, through strong collaboration, we have made tremendous progress and have addressed up to seventy of the hundred-and-forty recommendations, to include, but are not limited to, updating the township's fire service ordinance, entering into formal cooperation agreements with the three fire companies, issuing seventeen general orders, including a standardized training program for both volunteer and career staff, ordering three standardized fire engines to ensure interoperability. We launched a progressive stipend staffing initiative. We've developed and implemented a township-wide duty officer program. We've consolidated three individual records management systems into one unified township platform. And perhaps most importantly, we've strengthened communication and transparency between the township and its dedicated fire companies. These milestones represent the foundation of something far greater than just policy or equipment. They reflect our shared commitment to public safety and our collective investment in a modern, unified fire service for Lower Paxton Township. Make no mistake, our volunteer firefighters are highly-trained, deeply-committed professionals who answer the call time and again, as they just did. Their service has been and continues to be nothing short of exceptional. However, we must recognize the realities of a growing community. Lower Paxton is a twenty-eight-square-mile township with fifty-five thousand residents, rising to over eighty thousand during daylight hours. We're of urban density, and we contain critical infrastructure, including major interstate corridors. As our community grows, so too do the demands on emergency services. In just the past year alone, fire call volume increased by sixteen percent, reaching nearly nineteen hundred incidents in two thousand twenty-four. Despite the success of our stipend program, offering up to fourteen thousand dollars annually, we are still experiencing service gaps where fire stations and individual units are either delayed or out of service. Many of our volunteers balance full-time careers and personal responsibilities. They are committed, but they are stretched thin, and they are asking for help. The risk to the public is growing. The data is clear. The path forward is responsible, evidence-based, and rooted in partnership. The time has come where we must transition to a combination fire service model that blends full-time career staff with our dedicated volunteers to ensure that the community gets the level of service that they deserve. The creation of the Bureau of Fire represents the next chapter in that journey, a model that enhances coverage, supports our volunteers, and ensures that Lower Paxton Township continues to be a safe place to live, work, and raise a family. This is not about replacing our volunteers and their identities. It's about reinforcing them. It's about building resilience, and it's about preparing for the future together. So, I thank you all for your continued support and commitment to public safety.
I want to publicly commend Public Safety Director Kosheba and Deputy Fire Chief Graham for the work that they've done in conjunction with the fire companies. The three companies were invited here tonight because the MRI report says very clearly that the Board of Supervisors has a role to play, and that role is that we should actively engage cross-section of the fire companies and also the public. The reason for that active engagement is to establish goals, objectives, and a vision. You're here this evening so that you can tell us what you're feeling, what you're All the work that's gone on to this date has provided for you some level of feeling of where we're at and where we're going, and we want to hear from you. So, what we'll do is, we will give each fire company, whatever representative you choose, five to ten minutes to speak. We'll start here with thirty-five, we'll go to thirty-four, and then finish up with thirty-three in a row, my right to left. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Harp.
Chief Harp, I need you to wait just a second. When we opened the budget process in November, we invited, we, as the Board of Supervisors, five of us, invited the public into our executive session during the budget presentations that each department made to the Board during the budget process. We had Parks and Rec, we had Public Safety, excuse me, we had Public Works, we had Public Safety. Under Public Safety, we had each individual firehouse come in and talk to the Board of Supervisors to make a presentation about what their hopes, their dreams, their needs were. We also, at that time, invited the public. The hearings that we had in executive session were public. We asked hard questions of you all. Robin Lindsey asked questions. Chris Judd asked questions. Paul Nivero asked questions. Norm Zumis asked questions. Me being the junior supervisor was learning the process, but I asked questions, too. So, we've made a commitment to having you all come in, talk to us, and do a public presentation. We passed the budget on December seventeenth according to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Second Class Township Code, as per required. So, I am not exactly sure what we're going to be able to accomplish tonight, because we have a budget that we passed. We've heard from you all. We adjusted the budget that was presented to us based on what we heard, because public safety is our number-one concern as supervisors. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Supervisor Thompson, for that history lesson. I will tell you that the reason the fire companies are here is because in the next couple of months, certain decisions are going to have to be made. So, let's just suggest in the next six months, a foundation is going to be laid for this combined fire service, and whatever we do over the next six months is going to set the foundation for the next year, the next six years, the next sixty years. I think you will at least concede that there are multiple new members of the Board who would like very much to be educated, like you had a chance to be educated. Would that be fair? So, with that, I will ask Chief Harp to go ahead and start the presentation, five to ten minutes. Tell us what you think. Tell us whichever one of you wants to speak, or any other expert you have in the room.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Board Supervisors. My name's Sean Harp. I am the Chief of Lingelstown Fire Company. I'm just going to be very brief, because I know President DeSanto has some very good points that we want to talk about. But just a general idea of where I think we are as Lingelstown Fire Company and part of the Bureau of Fire is, obviously, we still are one-hundred percent volunteer. The guys leave their homes, the guys and gals, they leave their homes. They staff the station when they're available to. But there's still room for improvement with the stipend program, we believe. I can't remember the actual numbers that we're looking at for the stipend coverage, but I know it's not where we would like to be. I think there's still some improvement there that we can really get some more word out, try to get those firemen that are firemen somewhere else that maybe want to come into Lower Paxton Township for a shift or two and provide a service here for that stipend. So, I think some advertisements could be very well in line for that. And then generally, we can support a plan when it's created, but to this point, we're still not there, and that's probably what we're going to talk about tonight and moving forward, is what that plan actually looks like and how it does support the volunteer system, as the ordinance says. So, the last... So the last thing that we want to see in the end is that we become a combination department and it happens in a way that the volunteers just say, you know what, we're done. That would put everybody in a bad spot, right? The public, you guys as the supervisors of the board, you'd be looking at a lot more money real quick. So again, in the end, I do believe that we can support what's going on, once we know what that is. We'll figure that out here, but I'm going to pass it over to President DeSanto because he does have some points that we want to speak about.
Thank you, Chief. President Nick DeSanto from Lingelstown Fire Company, again, thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. You know, we've had a lot of conversations over the last two years and a lot of progressive change has come into this fire service that I honestly didn't think was going to be a reality. And I would say that hitting on 70 of 140 recommendations is a significant accomplishment for a sophisticated and diverse of departments as we are. And as Chief Graham said, these last couple of years, I think everybody at these tables will agree, we've worked, albeit not always agreeing, but we've worked pretty well together to come up with reasonable solutions to what are either real or perceived problems. You know, before the board here, you know, there's a road, the proverbial road of three paths, right? We can continue on the path that we are with the all volunteers. We recognize that there are potential for gaps in those and that you're going to be relying upon one another to continue to fill those gaps. But as I look around the room, I look around our own organizations and I ask myself, with my own duration, you know, there is a finite point to that because the reality of the matter is, we went from 400,000 volunteers in the mid 90s to about just under 40,000 as of last year in the Commonwealth. It's a falling rate that we can't plug any further. We're competing against our neighbors for the same people. And if we want to be putting firefighters and staff stations, the only choice that we're going to have is to supplement what we have right now. And that's the combination department that has been discussed and presented. And our organization stands true to what Chief Harp says, you know, we believe it's got to come now soon because I don't think anybody wants to give up the level of service that they have. But we want to do it in a way that the volunteers are truly being supplemented and not being replaced intentionally or accidentally. Either way, it's a bad thing and it puts the taxpayers at a disadvantage and it's going to put this board at a much more strenuous financial obligation if that were to happen. So I don't want to go into a ton of details because I know there's going to be a lot of questions that are going to come around here. But at the end of the day, we're proud of our organization, we are super proud of our identity, we will continue to fight for our identity and our community. But we believe that we have a place that we can continue to support the township as a whole, develop and grow the bureau. But I think that one of the things that we really need to do is drop, step back and look at the how is this going to be rolled out? And I'm sure there's thoughts, there's conversations that we can, you know, dive into, but without diving much more into my five minutes, 10 minutes, we'll pass it off to Paxtonian.
Yeah, thanks.
You guys used four minutes and 37 seconds. So you did well under the...
Nice, all right.
I just want to add one thing. Obviously, the MRI report was intended to do just that, that is, support the volunteer fire companies. I just want to interject this one thing. When I spoke to the folks at PSS about volunteer fire company, the expert they have over there said to me, a volunteer fireman is worth $33 and some change an hour. And I disagreed with him. And my disagreement was that there's no amount of money that would adequately compensate our hero volunteer firefighters. Name me another job where you volunteer and it takes you away from your kid's birthday or your evening dinner or you're awakened in the middle of the night to go and do your volunteer work. And oh, by the way, while you're being a volunteer, you might die. There is no amount of money that could compensate fairly. So you folks are truly heroes and we absolutely do want to support you. And that's the goal of what we're trying to reach with this investigation and this learning environment we're doing now. Thank you very much for your comments. And Chief Moore, we'll go to 34, Paxtonia.
Sean, I just have one more point if it's all right. Supervisor, just one more quick point.
You're well under your 10 minutes.
Good deal. First of all, thank you for those words. I'm sure everybody in this room is thankful for that and we know that you guys are there to support us, so we do appreciate that. One thing that I just wanted to bring up, we have something that's a little different at Lingelstown. I know Paxtonia has some of this, Colonial Park has a little bit of it, but it's the home response aspect. So what home response is, is when volunteer firemen aren't at the station, but they're doing their normal life thing. Maybe they're mowing the lawn, maybe they're hanging out with the kids or playing with them in the yard, but they're available for a response. We started tracking that at the beginning of the year. And just so you guys are aware, 2025 to date for Lingelstown, we have 7,074 hours of home response availability. And that is people that are qualified to do the job. So while they're not captured in the stipend program, they're not captured in those statistics, they are available, ready to respond, and we do do that. So I just wanted to point that point out too.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Paxtonia.
Hi, Larry Chopansky, President of the Paxtonia Fire Company. I just want to start this off with Lingelstown mentioned the surge of drop in numbers of the volunteers. And at the end of this month, I'll be, been a volunteer firefighter for about 10 years now. And I could personally say the drop I've seen in just that 10-year mark, let alone what the actual number has been over the past how many decades. At this point in time, the volunteers do do a great job of providing the service to the fire, to the residents, to the fire companies. However, this is not a sustainable process forever. We've seen that in the data. As things continue to grow, as people continue to move on, there needs to be some kind of help to continue to give that service to the full degree. And we're never going to meet that 100%, obviously. It's almost an unattainable goal, but this is kind of the step forward into being able to meet that goal. I've seen it just in normal life. As the older generation starts to die out, there's nobody there to replace that generation. The same thing's happening with volunteer fire service. Right now, in the back of this room, you see all the volunteers that came out tonight. This is a good number. There is more that weren't able to make it. However, as that number continues through life and things change, people move out of the area, people sadly pass away through the time of life, who's there to step up to be that replacement? I'd like to tell you every day, 365 days a year, there's going to be a fire truck in front of your house when you call for it. However, the sad reality is, we have the numbers of fire apparatus being out of service throughout the week. We have the numbers of firefighters not being able to staff the station. I have a full-time job at Lower Paxton. During the day, I'm here, I'm not at the firehouse. There are members that are at the firehouse that staff the firehouse, and then there's days where there is nobody available. And as a township, we accommodate that to the fire companies and we try to make those numbers work. But again, there needs to be a breaking point where we get that help to be able to serve that. The career staff is a great move, it's going to supplement what we have and it's going to keep it going. Our volunteers are here to do one job and that's to be, continue to be firefighters. Just because you put somebody else there to help with the job, the volunteers aren't going to walk away from that. The people that want to be here to respond to those calls are going to be the people that continue to show up and respond to those calls at the end of the day. At the end of the day, this is kind of a coming forward movement. I've been here in Paxtonia for two years now, coming on three in August. There has been humendous strides to become a unified organization. When I first got here, compared to where I come from, the Hazleton area, things are a lot different from the Coal Region, as Chief Fogg knows, things are a lot different back there. And things are a lot different here. And we've made huge strides to come into a united organization to be able to provide the best service to our public. And I think as long as we have your backing support, the volunteers of Paxtonia, although there are disagreements and those are minor things that we overcome as a department, as discussion between the chiefs, we'll get through these things and we'll make these things work. Because at the end of the day, we're here for you, we're here for them behind us, we're here for the people. You know, we wouldn't exist if you guys didn't live here. If there was no residency, no employees, what would be the point of a fire station be to sit in the middle of a field somewhere, right? So we're here for you, we're here to make ourselves better as we go. And as volunteers, we're going to continue to do that. However, we're going to ask for the help to be able to do that. In order to continue doing our job and to continue getting these guys to keep going and doing their thing, there needs to be some, to back up to reinforce that. And that's pretty much all I had to bring tonight. I'll turn it over to Chief Moore.
I just have a very few statements. I echo what President Chopansky stated. In the last 12, 15 years that I've been at Paxtonia, I got to see moving into where we didn't really get along with Colonial Park, didn't get along with Lingelstown, we were kind of all out of each other. We still kind of are in fun games, but...
Friendly competition is good.
But now, I think in the last couple of years, this is the most that we've worked together since I've been here. We have people crawl staffing fire trucks, we have people riding other fire trucks, working together, training together more. I think going forward, with the support of the township supervisors and the support of all our chiefs and stuff, having career staff on just to help us, there's days like Paxtonia lately, we've been hurting. We lost, I think we did some numbers, we lost probably close to 11 members in the last two years, just because of life, like nothing major going on, just life, people having kids, people, new jobs, moving, stuff going on. And that hurts us. Our daylights, guys work, some guys work multiple jobs, including myself. So, but I think the career staff will greatly support us and like President Chopansky, we're in support of it just because we know it's going to help.
Let me just say now that we are very proud of how the rough edges between the departments, between the different firehouses have smoothed out. We really like that and we appreciate all the efforts that you all have put in to help that come along.
Paxtonia, your comments are complete.
Just one more thing, and obviously there's friendly competition, but when it matters, when 911 is called and the alarms go off, the competition goes to the side and the service gets done. I just want that to be clear.
Exactly.
And our volunteers are always up to the professionalism and Chief Graham pointed out the standards we follow. And that's how we will always be, that's how we'll continue to be. And with the help that you can provide to us, our volunteers will stay strong as they can be. So, thank you.
And we appreciate that.
All right, five minutes and 49 seconds. So you're the top number right now. Let's see what 33 has for us. Chief Fogg?
Chief Moore says I'm going to win. I made a prepared statement because I had a lot on my mind and I didn't want to miss anything because it's a very crucial topic. So I'm going to read a prepared statement and then by all means, during question, answer any specific questions, I'll be more than happy to answer. I can agree with Larry, the Coal Region and Brad would probably know a little bit about it, is quite different than the Harrisburg area. So my name is John Fogg and I'm the fire chief of the Colonial Park Fire Company. I'm also a Lower Paxton Township resident residing at 6293 Staple Court. The fire service has been part of my life since I was a kid. I'm a second-generation volunteer firefighter, serving since 1998. I love and admire the fire service culture so deeply that I was driven to pursue a career firefighting job in 2004 at the Army Depot in New Cumberland, where I am currently served as a rescue captain. I've spent the better part of my life as a firefighter, a fire officer and a fire instructor in both the career and volunteer fire service throughout the country and in some other countries as well. I don't often talk about my background and accomplishments and only do so tonight to point out that my opinions don't come solely from a local view, but also a regional and national view of the fire service in its entirety. I believe tonight's topic to be important enough that I took off work to ensure I was here to speak about it. I've never been much into politics, but I understand and follow them closely because they have tremendous bearing on every facet of emergency services within my career and volunteer fire departments. We often hear the catchphrases like, you can't put a price on public safety, but we do it every day because we have to and it's exactly why we're sitting here tonight. Since I came to Lower Paxton in 2006, I've watched the ebbs and flows of all three fire companies in terms of volunteerism and active firefighting membership. While the membership numbers have ebbed and flowed for 20 years, they've also collectively trended downward as they have throughout the entire country. Several stopgap measures have been implemented throughout previous years to try and recruit, retain, incentivize and encourage current volunteers to donate more time and to find new volunteers to come into our doors. For example, in 2017, the Board of Supervisors adopted an ordinance allowing for an EIT and local property tax credit for active volunteers. This ordinance was a good start, but should be updated to allow for the highest credits allowed by state legislation for our volunteers. In 2019, Paxtonia Fire Company received a regional SAFER grant from the federal government for recruitment and retention to benefit all three fire companies. It allowed us to provide monetary incentives to volunteers for answering calls and also produce recruitment websites and videos for recruitment. After the expiration of the SAFER grant, Colonial Park Fire Company started its own monetary incentive program encouraging members to spend time in the firehouse. In November of 2023, Lower Paxton Township implemented a stipend program allowing for up to four members at each firehouse and a township duty officer to sign up for incentivized shifts. All of these programs had one of the same goals. They are stopgap measures that are used throughout the country to slowly bridge the gap between a waning volunteer fire service and the need for some amount of career staffing to form a combination fire department. The volunteers we have do a tremendous job at protecting the 12th largest municipality, its 56,000 residents and all the additional visitors every day. The problem is, we've hit a point in the system where volunteerism alone is not enough to guarantee fire protection. We're operating three volunteer fire companies without any safety net. For instance, if the available volunteers arbitrarily plan overlapping vacations, there becomes a gap in coverage that are unsafe and unfair to the citizens of Lower Paxton Township, including my own family. Like any resident of Lower Paxton, when I go to work for 48 hours at a time, I expect my family to be protected at home by the emergency services within Lower Paxton Township. Unfortunately, we can't guarantee that safety against fires 24 hours a day, seven days a week, for my family or for anyone else's because we have unpredictable and intermittent gaps where these very minimal or no volunteers are available. In 2023, Lower Paxton Township received a report from MRI on the township fire services that the township paid roughly $50,000 to have evaluated. The report recommended the immediate hiring of full-time career firefighters for the township. Concurrent with that report, Colonial Park had voiced concerns about our own staffing abilities because the live-in program that used to have 12 to 15 firefighters living at the station had dwindled down to two or three firefighters after COVID. Currently, that program has seven firefighters living at the station, but that doesn't mean there are always seven firefighters available. They have families, jobs, schooling and hobbies outside of the firehouse, as do all the other volunteer firefighters in the township. In 2024, we attended budget meetings along with other officers to speak in support of hiring a small contingent of full-time firefighters. While Deputy Chief Graham requested and budgeted for 10 firefighters, I would have advocated for 12 positions myself to guarantee three firefighters available on every four-shift rotation and four shifts total. This would provide fire coverage even on days when volunteer numbers are dwindling or non-existent. At the end of the budget meetings, the 2025 fire tax mileage was raised from 0.6365 mils to 1.24 mils with the intent of hiring 10 full-time firefighters. The township then posted a job announcement and recruited applicants while charging them a fee to apply, only now to debate if we should hire firefighters. The township is now currently spending an additional $30,000 to determine if we should pay for firefighters and how much we should pay them if we hire them. I'm happy to spend tonight or any other time educating the public and the Board of Supervisors on our fire department statistics, the nationally recognized response standards, or our own successes and deficiencies for our departments. In fact, I'd encourage the public and the board to learn as much as they can about the fire department and their operations, their lives all dependent on it as well. Since I've been at Colonial Park, Lower Paxton Township has had four fatal building fires killing five residents. This does not include the fatal fire last month that was two non-fire-related deaths. The first one of the fatal fires listed was in February of 2016. Prior to that fire, it had been more than 20 years since a house fire killed someone in Lower Paxton Township. The chance of a house fire happening tonight or any other night is still 50/50. It either happens or it doesn't. There's no statistical analysis, probability chart or fancy equation that can predict or prevent fires from occurring. The only thing we can do properly, can do is properly staff, train and respond immediately when we are dispatched to a given resident and give them the best chance of survival during their emergency. The bottom line is very simple. The Lower Paxton Township volunteers are very, very good at what we do. We're working together, coordinating and planning better than we ever have in the last 20 years. Most of that is in part to hiring of a deputy chief that encourages and forces what should have been happening all along. This planning has also brought to light significant gaps where enough volunteers are not available to keep fire apparatus in service at all three firehouses. The only way to guarantee fire protection as available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, is to hire career firefighters and shift into a combination fire department, one that is primarily staffed by volunteers so long as they exist, but backed up and supported by career staffing to fill the inevitable gaps in the schedule. A relatively small contingent of 12 firefighters compared to the roughly 60 police officers would bring guaranteed fire protection to Lower Paxton Township and offer much-needed reprieve to the volunteers who lose sleep trying to ensure there's always someone available as best as possible to protect this township and its residents. I appreciate the board's time tonight dedicated to the fire service of the township and hope after tonight, we can move forward with the hiring of the much-needed positions. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Supervisors, fellow fire service members and members of the public that are with us this evening. My name is Stephen Michalone, I serve as the this evening. My name is Stephen Michaelone. I serve as the president of the Colonial Park Fire Company, and I live at 4521 Fritchy Street here in the township. I hail from the city of Altoona and moved here 10 years ago to take a position with the state when it was offered to me. Prior to that, when I was at the city of Altoona, I served as their assistant fire chief under with a platoon of 17 members and a total staff of 70 as our complement. That city sort of mirrors what we have here within your township, although it's half the size physically, almost the same population and slightly smaller, but with those kind of statistics as to what staffs that fire services for stations every day. In 1895, those who were in the leadership positions of that city realized that although they had nine volunteer fire stations, they needed a career service in order to be able to provide the services which were required in a densely populated area. That population density is getting close to what you have here in this township as well, and with it comes all the challenges of of fire and public safety that we are discussing this evening. Chief Fogg so eloquently gave you a great listing of what the concerns are, where we stand today, and where we probably should be going. I echo his sentiments and fully support the direction in which this is going, and our membership as a whole has done so as well through a unanimous vote when it came up to the membership at previous meetings. I want you to know that our firefighters do not wait for calls to happen. There are things that go on day in and day out that are outside of our response capabilities or outside of what our realm of response is. That happens to be public safety education that occurs routinely, that's maintenance of our equipment, that's maintenance of our stations, that's recruitment activities to try to bring others into our ranks, and mentoring of young firefighters or inexperienced firefighters as they join our ranks. These are expectations that would remain of those that would come into the fire service that are those that you hopefully will be hiring in the future. We respectfully request that you sincerely take the recommendations that have been brought before you from your staff and from my my fellow leadership of the fire company seriously, and give us the help that we so desperately need in these days ahead. Thank you.
10 minutes and 10 seconds. You guys are good. Chief Fogg, you said many things in your prepared remarks, and importantly, you called out two things that we're we're proud of and and we're we're working on. One, you said about getting educated, and that's what this is about. But our current makeup of the Board of Supervisors needs to be educated. We need to understand. As I said, our responsibility, according to the MRI report, is to set objectives, goals, and a vision, and that's what we want to do. The other thing you you brought up was the fact of hiring a consultant to figure out how to pay and compensate these full-time firefighters. I've said this before, and I'll continue to say it until I think the question is satisfied. What we do here now, over the next couple of months, maybe next month, I don't know, but when the Board of Supervisors, because I'd like to see us have a public meeting as well, but once the Board of Supervisors has the answers that they need, then maybe we can move forward, and and hopefully that'll be in positive direction. But we don't know what we don't know. And former Defense Secretary Rumsfeld famously said, you know, there's a lot of things, some they're known knowns, the unknown knowns, and then I won't get into the whole thing, but but that's the purpose for our for our exercise here tonight. I want to thank you for your testimony, for your thoughts. Members of the board, we have questions?
Can I start?
I don't want to monopolize the time, and I've got several questions.
Yes.
I hope my fellow colleagues can give a change first.
Thank you. So in reading the MRI report, I feel like it was predicated upon a statement that says, as with most fully volunteer fire departments, the availability of volunteer personnel for weekday daytime response is extremely limited, a situation that is not going to improve for the foreseeable future. Can you elaborate on the specific times where there is a lack of coverage?
I'll speak I'll speak for Colonial Park. It is unpredictable, more so probably for us than the other departments, because fortunately or unfortunately, a majority of our members that are active firefighters are career firefighters somewhere else. So they might be home for three days in a row and then working for one or two days in a row, which goes against the norm for volunteer firefighters in most reports, like MRI's report, where daylight is traditionally the worst time, simply because most people work a first shift job and then they're home in the evening. So we're kind of a unique circumstance where most of our, a majority of our people are probably on shift work, which means they're gone for 24, 48 hours, and then maybe home for three, four, or five days in a row. The problem for us becomes everybody's on different schedules, and when they all align, when all the stars unfortunately align, we go from having five or six people around one day to having zero around the next day. And that's very hard to predict, just because it has to do with guys picking up an overtime shift, somebody being held at work, somebody getting home late from work, and just very unpredictable in terms of the shortage area, where most fire departments can say we're better at night than we are during the day. That's not our case at all.
I know from a Paxtonia standpoint, it's also fairly variable throughout the days. Our daylights are generally the worst. I will say, Paxtonia has a uniqueness. We have a fairly good live-in program. Fogg touched on his portion of it. We have approximately six or seven members a part of that program as well, myself included. Nights are usually our better time. I would say at Paxtonia, a majority of the time, we have a crew in the firehouse. We have plenty of young firefighters who are there to volunteer their time and respond on the incident. A lot of our problems come with who drives them there. That's a very prestigious position of, that's a fairly expensive piece of upper assets that's out in your parking lot currently. We want the appropriate people behind that, and the appropriately trained people that are able to get it from point A to point B and appropriately operate it. So in bringing that staff upon us, we fill those gaps of, our volunteers are here, they need somebody to supplement them to possibly just easily get them there. But the daylight's probably, I think, and everyone can agree, that's usually the worst time, just due to the amount of people working.
Yeah, speaking for Lingelstown, daylight does tend to be where we're the lightest. We can usually pull off one, at least one cross-staff crew. And for for those who don't know what a cross-staff crew is, it's people that are qualified on more than one piece of apparatus, so if either one gets dispatched, it can respond. So but yeah, I agree with these guys. Daytime probably is our toughest, maybe six in the morning to three in the afternoon. But there's, I would say, out of the three companies, I don't, I don't know that we're out of service as much, just because we do have a bigger group of people, but it still is definitely something to talk about throughout the township.
Thank you. So there are a number of municipalities that just hire drivers. Are there, is there a rationale for the five to 10 number, why we settled on 10? I know, John, you mentioned 12. What's the rationale for that specific number 10?
Sure. Supervisor, if I could circle back to the days of the week as well. When we looked at, so when the MRI study originally came out, it does state in the MRI study that we should hire contingent Monday to Friday daylight through data extrapolation through our records management systems, which I'll touch on it real quick, because Supervisor McCormick and I have talked about this on numerous occasions. Prior to January of this year, the three fire companies each had separate records management systems. So essentially, if we responded to a call in the township, it would be documented three separate times. The first year and a half, or first two years that I was here, 2023, 24, I spent a great deal of my time dissecting that data to break it down so that we had credible data that spoke to our true, true number and our true data sets, which was difficult. It had, you know, between running the numbers in all three systems to running the county CAD numbers, and then breaking that down so that we weren't caught. So essentially, I didn't want to count one call as three calls, because that inflates numbers. So any numbers, any reports previously that you would have seen coming out of my office is true credible data, because I took the time to break that down, to give us true data to work off of. Starting January of this year, we've migrated from those three independent systems to one township-wide records management system that essentially frees up a lot of time for me when I have to run reports at the end of the month, and then I can make those those pretty reports that you see come across your desk. So with that said, that data showed us that this was not a Monday to Friday problem. This was a seven days a week issue that we needed to address. When you look at the spread, the spray charts, while there are days that are busier than others, it's it's genuinely pretty even across the board, and when we look at where our performance gaps are, those are also fairly even across the board, Sunday through Sunday. As far as time of the day goes, that also has variances in it, and collectively, our busiest times, when you look at the shifts where we're running the most calls, it's 6A to 6P. That is where our request came from for the 10 firefighters. Again, I can get on board with what Chief Fogg said about 24-hour staffing. However, when the director and I talked about it, and we talked about it with the leadership of the fire companies, our plan was to introduce career staffing in a way that was not only fiscally responsible, but addressed our biggest concern upfront, and that is where the daytime staffing came from.
Do you think that hiring career staff would help us enhance our fire protection, prevention, or code enforcement efforts?
I think that's entirely up to the board. I think it should. I can tell you that we, for instance, we had a connection missing for the fire department on a building several years ago, and it took me all three years to figure out how to get that force to be replaced. It's routine that you walk into businesses, and there's code infractions that, although minor, when you compound them with a bunch leading up to a fire and then an occupied building, it leads to a problem. I think we're very lax on code enforcement. I don't think we have the staff to do it. I don't think you can rely on Deputy Chief Graham to do it. It's too big of a township, and he's already pulling his hair out dealing with us. So I think if if you hired, you know, a staff of firefighters, you could essentially make that job description to also include some sort of at least informal building walkthroughs to document stuff and say, hey, this needs fixed, and that could be part of their jobs for their routine day-to-day activities, which is what President Michaelone said as well. So I think that's a very real possibility. Lower Allen does something similar with their staffing program or their career program.
Yeah, I gotta agree. If we're putting the firemen in position, obviously, calls don't happen 24/7. Like, there is downtime, and that downtime can be used to lead to the goal of preventing an emergency from occurring. Code enforcement is a big deal. I can't tell you how many fire alarms we've been to where we can't even access the building, because the little black box that's meant to house the keys to access that building is just empty.
Yeah.
Nobody's there to enforce, you need to put keys in here. And that's just the simple task of, now we're delayed if entering that building, whether or not there is an emergency. So I think that's a, that's something that should majorly be looked at in enforcing those things to, obviously, we're never going to 100% prevent an emergency from occurring, but it'll definitely be helpful, and definitely it's a little life safety initiative that should be taken into consideration.
I think, you know, you're going to put career staff in place. It's a good opportunity for interaction with the community, and part of that's education. I would use the term more education than enforcement in that manner, you know, because the more you can educate, the more you can cooperate. They're going to be willing to work with you as opposed to stepping out, and there's times when you need to do enforcement, clearly, but as all these gentlemen said, you know, we've all run into situations where as simple as an OX box key is not even put in. Like, I mean, how can that be, right? You know, hydrants being updated and mapped, working with our water supply around here, it's like pulling, as everybody on this table has found out, it's like pulling teeth when we're paying $277,000 a year to make sure that their hydrants work, and we're getting on fires going, nope, doesn't work again. Ask for another tanker, you know, so enforcement, education, yes, it's an opportunity to create a better, safer environment. I just think that this is an opportunity to create a good working environment and not a negative connotation in it. But there is an issue that in this township where we need to be getting ahead of some of the buildings that are out there also that are very problematic for emergency services all across the board, not just fire. So it would be a good opportunity to use that and leverage those those people.
Thank you. And I just, one more question.
Can I can I jump in real quick?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, so I would agree specifically with President DeSanto. I think that it's all on how we we approach it. One of the biggest things in the fire service is a prevention, so community risk reduction. So not only are we reactive, we're proactive, and it would be the intent that any staff that we would hire would be expected to to not only get out and know the first duty area, the response districts, the buildings contained within, but to gather information, get to know those buildings, create relationships with those building owners or the, you know, the apartment buildings, things like that. And part of doing that is getting in those buildings, understanding their physical features, things like that, and you start to find deficiencies. And to President DeSanto's, we right now have a very limited enforcement ability because of the level of the international fire code that's been adopted here in the township, and that is something that is a is a conversation for a different day and that we need to have. However, I do think that the the starting point for all of that is an education piece. How can we help the property owner protect their investment, right? So if we can have a conversation with them and correct the issue, or, you know, maybe they didn't even realize it was an issue, and we talk to them about where they're placing their garbage that may be blocking a fire exit or replacing smoke detectors or, you know, replacing a missing fire department connection, what have you, that helps us help them. So I do think that there is a piece of that that is that we're missing now, because we're already asking these individuals to do so much, and they're doing some of this, but there's some of it that's just out of their reach. When I first got here, we had an issue with one of our our hotels, and through reports from those guys, looking at trends in our incident report, and we were able to see, wow, we were at this this occupancy, you know, I think at one point, like 10 times in a week, and I may be exaggerating a little bit, but it was a lot. So we went out there, and we had a conversation with them, and we figured out that it was an alarm system maintenance issue. It was a systems issue with how their their personnel were reacting when there was an alarm. We were able to work through that problem with them. They hired a contractor to come in and correct the issues. We had to give them a, essentially, there's some latitude in the in the code that allows some different systems or procedures within the occupancy. The way their their building was designed was just problematic, and we worked through that that challenge with them, and our call volume there has dropped. I think we've maybe gone there two or three times since, and that's over the last year. So we fixed that problem. I think we will see a lot more of that, you know, if we have staff that can be out and looking into these things. So, good question.
Got it. Thank you. So we need to balance the needs of our residents, public safety, as well as being fiscally responsible. Can we leverage the federal SAFER grants to fund career staff and/or support volunteer firefighters or recruitment?
So that's an absolute possibility, but there has to be a commitment from the board, and that's why we have not gone down that road just yet, because if we put in for the SAFER grant and we get it, a lot of times there's matching, and we have to be ready to pull the trigger when that time comes.
I would like to ask, and this may not be fair, but the word education has come up consistently in the last half hour. Have we ever done any education of our businesses and our hotels in the area in terms of the safety issues that you all address when you go into these properties?
So I would say, I can't speak to what has occurred before I was here in the last two and a half years. When the opportunity arises, I think we absolutely do have those education. We take, you know, it's a, it's a, it's an opportunity, you know, an instance of opportunity. I think, you know, our folks do take the time to explain those sorts of things, and we we try to to get them to do the right thing. And most of the time, they're willing to spend the money to fix things when they know about it. The the problem really boils down to time. I, it's, it'd be a full-time job in itself just to touch base with those individuals and every business in the in the township. When we see things that are glaring, we generally do some sort of a media push, or, you know, we'll talk to one of our local media outlets, or we'll push something on a social media platform to kind of bring attention to those things. But as far as a some sort of a formal training, Um, but as far as a, uh, some sort of a formal training, I don't know that any of that has, has been done.
Do municipalities ever hold workshops for their businesses in terms of these issues to get everybody in a room at the same time and, and do an education, do a training regarding the safety issues that need to be addressed in terms of preventative?
So I think most of the time that's just kind of handled through codes and, and compliance. But again, I, we don't have a staffing currently to be do, to, to address those on a regular basis.
Okay.
Yeah, as far as the education piece of that goes, um, not talking about building codes and such, um, just, just for, you know, clarity, um, the education that does happen currently, and I can speak for Linglestown, I know the Colonial Park and Paxtonia do it as well, but if, if someone reaches out to us, like, uh, you know, we have two, we have a couple of schools in our first duty, um, you know, they'll reach out ahead of time and say, hey, we're doing public safety day or it's fire prevention week, can you guys come out and do a presentation? We'll take a fire truck out, give the kids some, some fun things and, and just do the very basic stuff of, you know, like the drop, stop, drop and roll, go out to your meeting spot, all the things to try to keep you safe, um, in your home. Uh, and then we also do some things if, uh, like daycares reach out to us or, um, things like that where they need to do an annual, um, you know, safety drill. Um, they'll either come to our firehouse or we can go out to them, um, and show them how to use an extinguisher or show them a proper way to evacuate, just things like that. So, um, that's about as deep as we get into it. We do have a couple of guys at Linglestown that do just that, uh, mostly just that. They plan that all out. Uh, it's our fire prevention guys, uh, maybe a little different than what you were looking for, Supervisor Thompson, but, um, just so you know that that's happening in the background.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to sort of echo what they're saying. Our situation's very similar. We have one of our members who's dedicated to public education. I think last year she had encounters with over 4,600 of the residents and students within the township. Um, trying to remember the exact numbers, but it was over a hundred different events which were attended by our members for public education. But they are, um, by request. As far as like a life safety 101 type of seminar like you're sort of proposing, we've not done something like that in the past. Not to say that something like that would not be of value, it might be of great value. In my current position, that's exactly what we do for our personal care facilities is on a regular basis, is a review of what life safety requirements are out there that they have to, to meet on a regular basis because unfortunately they don't know. And it, it's hard to try to penalize people for what they don't know. You try to educate them instead.
Yeah, just to echo that, education's a daily kind of part of this job. Like we're always going out there and making sure everyone's aware of things. It's usually on the family residential side of things, dealing with the children, dealing with the parents. But even like when we go out to get a meal for the guys or, uh, we always have the fire truck with us to be able to respond to incidents while still kind of going about everyday life, there's people that just ask questions to the firefighters. Like why is the, why are things done this way? Why is this like this? And you'd be surprised the amount of people that may just come right up to you and want that education without having to kind of grip it out into some workshop form away, so.
All right, thank you.
I would like to talk about stipends. I believe we had a, an announced stipend program in Lower Paxton Township for about six months before we decided we needed career staff. Was the, do you know, uh, Deputy Fire Chief Graham, was the request for career firefighters based on a lack of participation in the stipend program?
I'm, I'm not sure I'm following. You said that, that we had a stipend program?
We, we announced our stipend program and we had it in place for about six months. And then the, the Board of Supervisors got a request for the 10 career firefighters.
So that, the, the request that came at the budget during the budget process in 2024 was as a, was as a result of the data that, um, came of the stipend program? So essentially, if you look at the, the mapping or the, the trending charts, um, we started really high because it was something new. Um, and then about, so it started in November of 2023. When we got to the January, February, March timeframe, um, we kind of plateaued off and that continued, those numbers kind of trended, um, in that same area till the July, August timeframe, which is when we started talking, you know, that's when the budget season really kind of opens up and, and moves forward, knowing that going into the following year, um, 2024, um, we would have to, or I'm sorry, into 2025, um, if, if we were going to address that plateau, we would need to start having those conversations. So yes, that's where that came from. So between the data that was showing, um, from the stipend program and the collaborative conversations that we were having with the volunteers, um, that's where that request came from.
Thank you. Uh, Chief Fogg, specific question for you since, um, I read, I read a post that you made on Facebook about fire service. And by the way, it was very, very informative and a lot of people I think learned a lot about it. Uh, so thank you for doing that. Well, one of the, one of the things you mentioned in there was it would be possible to have 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year coverage, uh, primarily, um, I'm assuming you're talking about one fire engine response, but I don't know. But you said with the stipend program and, um, we could, we could achieve full coverage for about 1.2, 1.3 million dollars worth of stipend annually. Um, can you tell me, is that not a workable plan or is that a plan that's not feasible because of these, um, lack of, of volunteers or? I know there are some restrictions with how much money people can accept in that program. I get that. But your very bold statement that we could have that kind of coverage with stipend truly interests me. Can you, can you describe how you developed that and whether or not it's a workable plan or not?
Sure. Um, that number was based on four slots at each firehouse, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. So essentially 12 firefighters around the clock, volunteers that are filling those slots. Um, but exactly what you said is the problem. We don't have the people and the people we do have are maxing out the program. So there's no feasible way to physically fill those slots. Theoretically on paper, we could staff the entire township for 1.2 million dollars if we had the volunteers to fill all those, those slots and if they were available. Um, but traditionally that's not been the case and the, and the numbers show that with what we've been able to fill on a daily basis.
This Board of Supervisors had a Teams meeting, that's an online electronic, you know, video conference meeting with Upper and Lower Marion Township. And, um, they took a very different approach to how they implemented career firefighters, but the Upper Marion representative mentioned their stipend participation for the last three months prior to our conversation with them. And, uh, they said that their stipend program participation was 92%, 96%, 97%. Now I should caveat that by saying I think they were talking about a single station, not three stations, but a single station. Our, currently our stipend participation runs, Chief Graham, you can help me out, but I think it's about 48%?
I'm sorry, the last, last part was 45%.
45%. Now here, here's the question that's rattling around in my head and that's for each of you guys to help me understand. It may just be there's not enough people. I get that. That may be the simple answer. Well, what I don't understand is how Upper Marion Township can have 97% participation in stipends and we can't get to that same level. So please help the Board of Supervisors understand that.
So I, so I believe one of the things, at least I'm, uh, I know in our firehouse is guys looked at the stipend. Some of the guys that, that accept the stipend, they use it as extra money, but some of the guys can't take away the time from their full-time jobs or their, their life or during the week or daycare, stuff like that. They can't get away from it for the, when you break it down, I believe it's like $10 roughly, give or take like an hour per, per person and those guys can't, like it's not like a thing for them. So they usually just try to avoid it. We still get those volunteers, but they don't go on our stipend data. So we might have some more guys during the daytime that are around, but we don't have them on the stipend data because they don't want to collect it. So our numbers might show that we're, that we're having some less, which we are. Uh, I think Paxtonia has the same group of guys. I think we got about 10, 10 guys or so, uh, same guys stipend program. We either fill the shift during the daytime or the live-ins with Lieutenant Spancy kind of running the helm at nighttime, making sure stuff's filled. They go on it then, but, uh, I just don't think that the people have, we don't have the people and we don't have, and those people sometimes don't have the time just because of family, life and other commitments. I mean, everything's more expensive these days, so a lot of people are working one, two, three jobs and, uh, the stipend programs kind of goes to the side, but I mean, they still volunteer their time when they can, but I think that's, I think that's our problem.
One of the, I don't, I'm not very well versed in what their program is or how they block their time slot, but with our program, we are locking in and committing to four hours. So we may have a lot of times, we might have people in there for two, two and a half, three hours and Chief Hart's pulling it up here for me, but you know, we had, you know, we put, implemented time clocks into all these stations. Was it last year? I guess last year, maybe two, almost two, I don't know, I'm losing track of time. Um, but we have thousands of station staffing hours that aren't logged into the stipend program because we're not committing for that full four-hour block. For example, we have guys back right now, we have a three engine, three people on the stipend crew, but I have, I think, seven or eight people still back for other apparatus at our station, but they're not going to be tracked on that number, but they're captured in our U10 time clock numbers that would show they were there and physically present. So, and one of the benefits that we have seen out of the stipend program is, hey, I got three guys that are on there. Well, I might get two more that just come down for two hours. So the stipend program is a plus to this, um, and does have an ancillary benefit of getting people in the door for staffing the firehouse. But it's not always reflected that we have four or five, and I would say that is a, I don't use the term problem, but it's a big misleading, uh, statistic, especially in Linglestown where we have guys that drop in for two hours in between kids and family sports and they hang out with their, I do it all the time with my kids, you know? In between basketball practice, I'm down there for an hour with them or whatever, you know? But it doesn't get captured as a staffing stipend program, even though we are in the firehouse staffing it for that 45 minutes, hour, two hours, whatever that time may be. Hopefully that, but without knowing how they did their block. And one of the recommendations is, you know, we could look at that, you know, is a four-hour block maybe too much? Should we look at, you know, lowering that down to a three or two or something like that, you know, to continue to incentivize, hey, I still have it for especially the daytime period, but it's, it's an option we can look at. I don't think anybody here is prepared to speak intelligently though on what that may look like.
Can we make this stipend program more flexible than I think you're saying? And maybe a four-hour block to be shared by two people so each person does two hours? Is that, is that the kind of thing you're talking about?
Something like that. Right now we do have that where, you know, if I pick up for two hours and Sean comes for the last two hours, we just split it. But what I'm saying is, is, you know, if there's only three of us that can cover for two hours, that would still pick up two hours. You know, we don't have to peel, peel off a dedicated four-hour block, but you might start picking up two in Linglestown, two in Paxtonia, you know, two in Colonial Park and they might be sequential, they may be overlapping, I don't know, but it might help continue that incentive to get, I can sit at home and watch TV and sports or I can come down to the firehouse and watch it for two hours and be on a fire call. What's the better one, you know? It's, uh, there's, I think the, the more we create some flexibility with parameters and controls into place that we don't have abuse of that system, you know, is, is worth continuing to investigate to try to help encourage.
Gentlemen, is it true that, um, if three people sign up for a stipend and one of them doesn't show up? Cause you need a crew of three, at least three to move a truck, right? Piece of fire apparatus. If, if a crew, if three people sign up for a stipend, but one of them doesn't show up, do the other two still get paid? Okay. And the reason they don't get paid is because even though there's a commitment there, so maybe some, is it possible? Let me ask the question this way. Is it possible that, um, some non-participation in the stipend program is people that thought they were going to get money, they showed up, because there wasn't a crew of three, they didn't get paid? Is, is, do you understand my question? Is that a possibility why some of our participation is lower?
I, I would say it's a possibility. We, we try to stay ahead of it. Um, so we do have a stipend coordinator in each station, um, appointed by Chief Graham, um, that, that takes care of that stipend and, and goes ahead of time to make sure that, um, you know, we have the slots filled. Matter of fact, when we were sitting in this meeting today, uh, our coordinator is sending out messages right now saying, hey, there's an open slot on this day, you know, who wants it? Um, so we try to stay ahead of that for sure. Um, hopefully that answers from us.
And I need to commend Chief Graham because I know on a daily basis, he's looking at, at, you know, where people are and where people aren't. He's trying to cross level and move people around and, and I know he's doing a great job at that. That's not my question. My question is, are there artificial impediments to the stipend program? If we could make those artificial impediments go away, and I don't know what they might be, and, and there may not be any. All I'm looking for is Upper Marion's got a 97% participation rate and we've got 48. And it seems to me the people in this room are at least as smart as the people in Upper Marion Township.
I, another just point I have, I think that, to, to speak to the Chief Fogg's thing is the people aren't really there, right? Because the ones that are doing it are doing it. There's still some more that don't participate as much, um, and we try to get those, those people to do that. Um, I think there's still a big opportunity to pull in some people from outside, whether it's through advertisements or we send a letter to every fire station within a so many, you know, mile radius, uh, to say, hey, if you're off this day and, you know, you want to make 40 bucks.
How can we do that, Chief? How, how can we do that? Can, can we pay somebody a stipend to do that program? To, to contact the fire companies and look, and are far and wide, 90, 100 miles away and, and try to recruit people?
We at Linglestown have used a, an outside firm for our mailer. Is it, uh, municipal? I forget what it's called, but they, they take care of mailing things out to all of our residents for our annual fund drive. Um, maybe that's, I don't know. Maybe that's something they could do, but I'm sure there's firms out there that could pinpoint spots to send things to, you know?
I think Supervisor Curtis was asking a question about a driver and I'd like to turn that around just a little bit. If we, if, if, if the township provided a driver at three, cause not everyone's qualified as a driver, is that correct?
Correct. Some stations have more than others, but yeah.
Okay. But the inability of a truck to move, some percentage of the time is because you don't have a driver. Is that a correct statement?
For us, not usually, but yes, for, for some of the other stations, absolutely.
So I guess the question I'm trying to drill down to is, is if, if the township figured out how to put a driver at the three firehouses or one of, as, as Upper Marion staffing just a single firehouse. If we had a way of putting a driver there, you knew that the truck would be able to move. We, we knew the fire apparatus was going to be able to move because we had a, uh, would we then get a greater participation in the, um, stipend program for other people to be there, uh, because they know they're going to get paid and they know if there's a fire call, the truck is going to move? Is, is, is that a worthwhile something for us to investigate?
I mean, I, Chief, do you want to start first or?
Supervisor McCormick, I think we're on the same page. Um, so just to, to address the Upper Marion thing, um, so Upper Marion does only stipend one station. One station has volunteer stipend in it and one station has 24/7 career staff in it. So they have two units in service all the time and they're protecting 16 square miles with 33,000 people. So the one station stipend in Lower Paxton Township doesn't work because of time distance standards. Um, we, and a, as we've kind of talked about previously, we originally had talked about only stipening two stations because we knew that the likelihood of really being able to fill out the three-station stipend wasn't, um, wholeheartedly realistic and that's where the 75% um, uh, goal or benchmark came from. However, in working with the volunteers, um, it was expressed that it would not be fair if we only put a stipend in two of the three fire stations. So that's how we landed where we were. Um, now to build onto that, the intent with the career staff day side is to have five, the, the 10 breaks down, and I think I failed to answer this earlier, sorry, um, is that there would be five on duty at any given time. So two shifts of five, um, with two being able to be on leave at any one point in time without creating overtime. So that gives us three people at a minimum working. Now the way they would be deployed is if we have two volunteers in each station per se, one can be placed at each station to drive the fire truck if they're missing a driver. However, if we don't have any volunteers available that day, then they would be strategically placed in the township on a fire truck together so that we meet our minimal manning of three personnel. So there is some flexibility, um, in the in the thought process there, and kind of that magic number of three is that if we don't have anybody at all, then we, you know, we can put them together, and we have at least one rig in the township, which is subpar, however, it's something. It's, it's more than what we could potentially have if we don't have anybody. If we have, you know, there are often times where we may only have one person in a fire station. We can take and put two people there, now we have a crew of three, and maybe we have a driver in another fire station, or if all five are working, three can be in a station, we could put one in one and another's. There's a lot of flexibility. This really is a moving target as far as where our, our staffing gaps are. You know, there are days when we have a fire station out of service, there's days where there may only be two people in a fire station, that sort of thing, and we are, like you said, we actively move people around. I really, I can't take all the credit for it, because these guys, especially, a lot of the guys that are around during the day do a great job of communicating and talking back and forth, they don't need me to be the middleman, and we make things happen. There are some days, there are a lot of days, that it's, it's more difficult than others, but we make it happen. This, this number that we're talking about, as far as ten career staff goes, really is kind of a bare minimum number to do exactly kind of what you were just describing. So, I think we're, our brain, we're connected here, we're, we're kind of on the same path, which I think is-
That's, that's a scary thought. Our brains are connected, yeah, that's, that's scary. Gentlemen, getting back to my question, though, is, are there artificial impediments to the stipend program working? Have we put stumbling blocks that stop firefighters from signing up for stipends? Do we have training requirements, or we have dress requirements, or we have minimum time requirements? Do we have anything that's stopping people from participating because the stipend program, I think, as Chief Fog mentioned earlier in his post, if we maximize that, we have the greatest potential of, of meeting the public's needs at potentially the lowest cost, so we're interested in figuring that out. Gentlemen, anything?
Yeah, I could speak to just one point on that. There are training requirements that we have, fairly new training requirements, that we, I won't say we didn't have before, but they were different. The latest training requirements are, you know, agreed upon in the township by the training committee, and then brought to public safety and with discussion and with everybody there. I think there could be a piece of that that might be holding us back with, with getting guys to where they need to be, or getting guys recognized, I should say, for their capabilities, because we do currently require pieces of paper for, for most of these certificates, most of these classes, to say, you went to the class and you passed it. What we've been asking for, and we've got a little bit of it with the training committee, is what we call J, what was, JPRs. So, it's certain things that you need to be able to demonstrate you can do properly, to say, yes, you have that certification, even though you didn't go take a piece of paper and a written test. So, there is a big piece of that, that I think we could probably get guys recognized quicker, rather than waiting for the class availabilities, waiting to go online. Like, right now, we're waiting on some things from the state, because they, they can't, correct me if I'm wrong, they can't issue any certificates right now because of something going on. So, there's people waiting on certificates. We've had officers at Linglestown that had many, many, many years of experience as officers, that throughout their tenure, those classes weren't ever a thing, or they weren't required, and you learned it on the job. To a point that we, we had an officer of twenty-six years step away because the amount of classes he would have to take to get caught up, to get those pieces of paper, to prove that he can do what he says he can do, wasn't feasible. So, you know, there, there's, there's credibility to certificates and training and classes, I don't want to take that away from anything. But I think there also needs to be that secondary look at it to say, yes, you've proved to me you do these skills, you are good to go for this requirement, right? So, you know, we, we've had people go through state training and get the certificates, and then not be able to perform them. So-
Let me ask you this question, Chief. In, I spent twenty-four years in the military. In the military, if you had a guy that was in a related field, and he was doing a job, but you needed somebody in this other field, and maybe it was small engines, and maybe a lot of similar pieces, his supervising shop foreman could, could test him. I don't care if you call it on-the-job training, or whatever name you give it, his supervisor could test them, and at some point in time, give him a piece of paper to say, yes, he's done this, he's done this, he's done this, and he, he, he doesn't have the piece of paper from the advanced individual training that gives, that gives him that specific MOS, but his supervisor says, yeah, he can do all the tasks that are necessary. Can we implement something like that, that'll give the chief at a station an opportunity to qualify somebody for a stipend that may not qualify now?
I do think we can. I think that's definitely a possibility, working with the training committee, to come up with what those JPRs would be for said certificates, so that way we don't delay them getting to that level and being able to take part in the stipend. I, I believe what it is now, you have to, you know, have your interior certification, and then you have so long to get firefighter one, to continue doing the stipend. It, correct me if I'm wrong on that, it might be engine certification, but regardless, there is a requirement there to go take a class, a state class, right? So, things that probably can be done in-house, that were previously done in-house, right, over many years. I know it's a different day and age, things move faster, fires grow quicker, we, you know, we can't deny that fact. So, again, I'm not dismissing the certificates, but I think we have to have that other way of, of qualifying our people.
Chief Fog, I'd like to come back to you. Oh, do you have something to add to that?
Mr. McCormick, if I could, just for a moment, I just want to reflect back on, on some things as it relates to training and levels of certification. And I'll probably misspeak on some of the, the years, but in the fifties and sixties in law enforcement, we did the very thing that we talked about just a second ago. We brought somebody on board, said, hey, you, you look like you'd be a good cop, let's put you on the street, this is how you write a traffic citation, and they were put to work. Did it work then? Sure, it worked then. Right now, there's bare minimums, standards for police, EMS, paramedics, EMTs, firefighters. Part of the reason for that, though there are many, is there is vicarious liability on town, on the township's behalf. If we put people to represent a standard level of training, they have met a standard and tested through that. To the chief's point, there are people that can make it through a program and still not meet our benchmarks, and that's understandable, but we are far beyond, as a service, any service, any emergency service, to allow someone to get on fire apparatus, stretch hose lines, go into buildings, without those benchmarks and those training levels, because we put ourselves at risk if we allow that. So, there, yes, there may be impediments to some of these stipend seats, but they are necessary impediments that should never go away.
I value your opinion, Public Safety Director, because, Hugh, I'm just really asking questions so that I understand, so that I, I can figure out how to get to the end of this.
So, to clarify what was said, those things are already in place. So, when somebody joins, somebody joins the fire company, and they meet the interior qualifications, which are the state requirements to be an interior firefighter, they have one year to meet the engine company requirements before they cannot participate in the stipend program. So, we give them one year to meet their engine front. Their engine front requires firefighter one, that is the only certification test that they have to take, because all the other requirements are JPR'd out, and that was designed by our volunteers who are on our training committee, and the chair is actually here in the back of the room, so, if you would like to speak any further on that. My question, Chief Harp, to you is, prior to my arrival, was firefighter one required to be an engine firefighter at Linglestown?
It was at one point, yes.
So, I believe that when we created that requirement, I believe we actually lowered the standard a little bit for the engine front, from the existing fire companies, because our, our goal was to make it more achievable and to, to limit the amount of time that it took. When we initially rolled out the stipend program, you had to be an engine rider to initially participate. We did lessen that to be interior qualified, somebody that can go inside of a burning building, or a driver operator, because obviously, somebody needs to drive it to get it there. So, we actually loosened those requirements up a little bit. So, as far as the barriers to, to, to somebody participating in the stipend, it's pretty easy. You just have to be able to, you have to be trained to be a firefighter.
I, I, I'm not trying to embarrass anybody or put anybody on the spot by asking these questions, I'm just trying to understand, Deputy Fire Chief Graham, you know, my, my point is, is that I want, in an ever-dwindling pool of volunteer firefighters, I want as many firefighters to qualify as possible, that's all.
I agree, and I think that's all I was doing, was just confirming that. I appreciate the question. I think, I just, I think that, yeah, you got it.
Chief Fog, I want to come back to you for a moment, because we had a request for ten career firefighters, and you put forth the idea of twelve. Explain to me why twelve is better than ten. What, how would they be deployed?
Sure. I'd like to back up for a second, we're sharing a, a microphone here, so, we, we keep referring to impediments, but I, I think the word is requirements. And the one point two million dollars for the stipend program is a fairly cheap number, I'll defer to the solicitors and lawyers on the board, of what it's going to cost if we get somebody hurt or killed by not being qualified. So, we're, we're talking about a piece of paper as if it's just a piece of paper, but it's a third party saying that somebody validated they're able to put a fire out, and whether they meet our standards or not, somebody else is saying they met some standard at some time that gives you some, some liability protection.
I, I understand, and if we had some sort of OJT program or something, it would be the chief saying he qualified, and that may not be as good as a piece of paper from some third party, but, yeah, I understand. Believe me, I understand, I'm not saying we want to do that, I'm just asking questions.
And the other, the other impediment was the hours, and, and we could, we could stipend hour for hour. That's not a headache for me, that's a headache for these guys, and it's a, it's a problem to, to handle hour for hour in terms of management-wise, but it was also to encourage people to spend more than just one hour at the firehouse, because that doesn't really give us much coverage, versus, hey, can you come for four hours? At least we have a block that's covered.
I, I guess what I'm trying to get to is, is kind of along the lines of Supervisor Curtis, what she was asking. If there's a driver there, and that's a typical impediment to getting that vehicle out the door, maybe that's an approach we need to at least look at or consider, so that we could then add on stipend participants to the driver.
Sure.
But that's, that's just learning, so I'm just, I'm just, I'm just learning, that's all.
Yeah, no, I mean, the driver kind of ties into the twelve. Back to the Lower Marion thing, I, I think percentages are a little deceiving, so I'd be curious what Lower Marion's counting as a stipend crew. For instance, we're counting stipend crew as four people at each station, that totals twelve people. Traditio, if we, if we go with the fifty percent number, that means we have six people every day, pretty much, of filled slots.
And I'm sorry-
Ninety percent for Lower Marion may be two people, or three people.
I don't know, I don't know the answer to that.
And I believe, I'm speaking a little out of turn, because I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I've talked to Chaz McGarvie and, and those guys at conferences and whatnot, I believe they're staffing one fire truck for the entire township, which means their total is four people for the entire township. So, they have three or four people every day, where we have six people every day, but our percentage is less, simply because we're counting more slots. So, I, I'm a big fan of statistics, I love, I love numbers, and I love data, but I also, data can be skewed one way or the other to, to support an argument, and percentages are one of those things.
You should get along great with Deputy Fire Chief Graham, because that guy has more numbers than, I mean, he's got numbers for everything.
In regards to the, the twelve, the reason for the twelve, I, I don't, I don't like doing things half, no matter what, and I believe if we don't hire twelve, we would not have twenty-four-hour, three-hundred-and-sixty-five-day coverage for everybody. And if we do hire twelve, you would have three every day. If I needed the very minimum, a driver at every station, it would be a force multiplier. For instance, if, if Chief Moore had one driver but didn't have a second driver for the back of his truck, but had three live-ins there, those three live-ins and that driver are useless without the second driver. One extra person there now gives us four extra people. So, if we had three people on the payroll every day on a twenty-four, what's, what's referred to as a twenty-four-seventy-two shift for the fire department, that's a very normal schedule, that would give you three people every day. At the worst-case scenario, you put all three people together at either Paxtonia or Colonial Park, because it's, it's in the middle of the township, and you run one fire truck north and south. You're not going to meet the time-distance requirements that are, that are recommended, but it's better than nothing. And if you had four or six volunteers available, but no driver, we split them up and moved them around, and now, instead of having three career guys, we went to nine, because we had six volunteers that just didn't have a driver, and as tradition has shown for at least the last couple of months, everybody's been more than willing to move their guys around. So, if we had two volunteers at each station, and none of them were drivers, it would be very easy to convince people to say, hey, one from Colonial Park go to Paxtonia, we're sending a career driver over there, one from Colonial Park go to Linglestown, we're sending a career driver up there, and we're going to run both sides of the township. And two or three people working every day on the career side may generate ten or twelve people in terms of a fire response, and that's an immediate response, not a delayed response. And Chief Harp is absolutely correct about the home response, they are a drastically different animal on that side of the township with the home response. The downside is, that's, that's a, a long turnout time, and having those career drivers may very well, in most instances, they have one or two in the station, but they may be waiting for a driver, that fire truck would go right away. Instead of that turnout time being four minutes, it may be a minute and thirty seconds, and that's a drastic difference.
You, you use the term force multiplier, and I guess that's what I'm really getting to. I'm trying to figure out how we can skin this cat to make everyone, would you, or would any of you concur with one firehouse being the full-time stipending, or as Deputy Fire Chief Graham rotating it, you know, so that we had, see, what I'm trying to get away from is, people committing to stipends, showing up for their shift, and then they don't get, they don't get paid because there's, there's not a full crew there, and then they get it, you know, they get disappointed, and they say, well, I'm not doing this again because it didn't work out. So, I don't know how much of that there is, but I just want to make sure it doesn't happen.
I, I don't think that's really happening, at least from my perspective. I think we're more often to move people around than we are to see people frustrated, and we've done that and gotten people paid, but I think that also goes away if you hire twelve people, because there would be a, a three-person crew, no matter what. One way or another, we're going to have three people on fire trucks.
What would a three-person, full-time crew do to the volunteers? Would they, would they be, would that be a positive, or would that, would they be viewed as taking their job? I don't know the answer to that, guys, I'm not, I'm, I'm not throwing around accusations. That's a legitimate, honest-to-goodness, I don't know, an answer to that question.
A truthfully thing, it would just assist us. It's, it's exactly what this, what we're trying to do, is get more guys in here to help us. The volunteers are, we're exhausted. Like, I mean, I can't maybe speak for everyone, but like, we're running, I mean, we're running two, three calls maybe a day, we're running over a hundred calls a month, like, that's a lot of time away from your family, events, all that stuff you've mentioned about volunteer firemen. If we can alleviate that sometimes, or maybe that automatic fire alarm in the middle of the night where the career engine might take it, or the stipend crew that's on takes it, where maybe you don't have to get up in the middle of the night to go over, but you can hear, you listen, your pager goes off, so on and so forth. I think the volunteers that are still going to come in and commit to being a volunteer fireman are going to be here regardless if there's career staff here, or there's not career staff, but the career staff drastically needs to come and help us. That's what we need.
Everybody's on board with Chief Morset? Okay. I'm going to ask this question, and I hope those two guys over there don't throw things at me, because they might. We had people on the phone from Lower Marion and Upper Marion, and I'm not saying this is the right answer, because Lower Marion was not real positive about their experience, but just to give you an idea, and other, other municipalities have taken this approach as well. Lower Marion hired the career firefighters at the fire company level, that is, the nonprofit chartered fire company who has this building and trucks, hired full-time people. Upper Marion hired full-time municipal employees as career firefighters. Now, I don't know if either or both is the right answer. We had some probably negative comments from the Lower Parent, Lower Marion folks about whether or not it worked. I'd like your, obviously, you've not experienced it, but I'd like your opinions as to whether one or the other is better or worse, or would work or wouldn't work. Each of you three, I'd like the answer from each fire company.
I mean, I think, at least on our standpoint, Larry can maybe step in as well, individually hiring them, I don't think would make any sense from our, our standpoint. Our money comes from the township, so I think the township should be the ones who are hiring them.
We would give you the money to pay them. That's what I'm saying.
No, like, we operate off that money, so realistically, us hiring them, it, it's you hiring them, it's the township hiring them, not, I don't think it would work out. I don't think it'd be-
Okay. Yeah, I'm not saying the Deputy Chief Graham wouldn't have control of them, wouldn't be able to move them around and that kind of stuff. I'm, I'm just questioning whether or not it would make sense to be employees of the fire company or employees of the township, that's all. Thank you.
I, I think that there's pros and cons to either or, like, you, you've seen it firsthand, one, one way works, works this way, but doesn't work this way, and the other- One, one way works, works this way, but doesn't work this way. And the other hand is the other hand. I mean, you're just going to have to kind of come down to a point where you need to kind of sit down as a, as a board and decide what that decision is. But either way, there's pros and cons to both, so.
When I was growing up as a kid, the best marketing technique that ever existed to become a firefighter was a show called Emergency. You're trying to get the best people you can in your community to come in and work these jobs as firefighters, whether they're being paid or whether they're doing it as a volunteer. They're either going to have it in their heart 100%, or they're going to want to be compensated for it. And I'm not just talking in dollars and cents today as a paycheck that they may be bringing home on a routine basis. If they're an employee of the township, there's a benefit package that goes with that, as you're well aware of. If we farm that out to each individual fire station, that goes away as to what's mandated and what you probably would wind up offering, especially when you look at retirement benefits. And I realize that you're looking at stranded costs and so forth for that. But on the opposite end of that, a good quality firefighter is looking for those things for the department they're going to call home. So, if you're looking to pay people and bring them in and to provide that top-level service that we're looking at, I wouldn't do it through that means. I would do it as a township employee that is going to wind up being able to advertise for the best of the best. And I will say that that's going to go a long way, especially for somebody that's looking for a career path coming right out of high school. And firefighting can be a great career path for somebody. And that's how we would like to market this. I think by having the ability to come on as a volunteer and maybe progress to be a career firefighter within your community is the best marketing strategy we could ever employ. And I, I really, really respectfully request you look at it from that perspective. Thank you.
I would only add that I, I don't think, I mean, I don't want to speak for our, our financial accounting people, but I don't think they want the headache and the additional stress of paying people just as pass-through money. It's just one more added burden that we're already saying there's too much to do. So, it's, it's a management oversight that the fire department would have to provide, whether or not Deputy Chief Graham's still in charge. The pay side of it, determining schedules, all that type of stuff, I don't, I don't think I would want that headache. I'd be a fool to look at the money and say, I don't want it. I could hire whoever I want. But I really don't think it's worth the headache from my point of view and from a management standpoint. I don't think it makes sense for each individual fire company.
Thank you. Understand, I don't know what I don't know.
Do you have some other comment regarding some of these topics?
Sure.
So, just to give my name, my name's Colin Wagle. I am a resident in township, 90 South Haux Road. I also serve as the Assistant Fire Chief of the Colonial Park Fire Company. Just hearing some of the comments back here, and I think the, the gentleman, the leadership of our, our organizations here have done a tremendous job explaining this to you and the, the rest of the board supervisors of education, because that's where I think we all feel lax here is, is just education and knowledge of our service. However, respectfully, this conversation has been going on for a very long time between us as the organizations and even then with the additions of Directors Kishiba and Deputy Chief Graham. You use the term of skinning the cat. I think we've all come to the fact that there is no skinning the cat of this.
I apologize.
Deputy Chief Graham had stated that the 10 is the bare minimum of what we want to do. 12 would be a absolutely fantastic addition to our, our services here. But seeing what happened in the, in the budget meeting of having the, accepted the budget of, for the 10 career firefighters, Chief Moore had mentioned that we are exhausted. And that, in retrospect to all of us, and I can, I think, I don't want to speak for everyone standing behind me here, of our men and women of the Lower Paxton Township, but that is a light at the end of the tunnel for us. We are exhausted, as Chief Moore had said. We are exhausted. Our families are exhausted. We have discussed this again multiple times. How many stopgaps can we have? And we talk about how many, limiting this budget to the amount of people. We talk about putting just a driver at each station. That is not safe. That is not a safe practice for me. It's not a safe practice for the best firefighter out here. You put one driver in a station, and that gives them the opportunity to respond with one-person driver only. Now, speaking for, for a resident, if my house is on fire, which, again, I live in the township, and I fear every time I leave this township for the protection of my family, you put a fire truck with one person, or even just two people coming in, and that parks in front of my house, I am not getting the service that I should be getting from my services, or from my emergency service of Lower Paxton Township. I think these guys have done a tremendous job. Our volunteers have done a tremendous job over the years, but we are exhausted. And I can guarantee you that if we do not get any help anytime soon, that light at the end of this tunnel goes out, it will be the end for a lot of people. Out of exhaustion, family's exhaustion, an oath that we always give to our family whenever we join this service is that family comes before the firehouse. And unfortunately for a lot of us, the case has been the firehouse has been coming first because we want to make sure your guys' families are protected. But in lieu, we are not protecting our own families. So, not only does it come down to us, not only does it come down to you, it comes down to our families and everyone else here that lives in Lower Paxton Township. Thank you, sir.
I apologize for using the term skinning the cat. That was no disrespect intended. That's just a common form of language that I use. I'm just trying to get the answers. As far as the driver question, that question was, was asked in concert with getting members to take stipends along with the driver. There's never an intent, any intent to have a truck move with one person. As a matter of fact, that's not, you can't do that, right? I mean, we have, we have a standard in township, have to have at least three people in a truck. So, if I said something that wasn't clear, the, the question about the drivers was simply to stimulate stipend participation so that people didn't show up and, and not receive the stipend. So, do we have other comments about the, where they're hired or not? No? Yes?
I want to jump in. I have one question that I think, for the stipend program, is there a minimum number of hours in order to get the stipend that we have to set? I'm, I'm the new person, so this has been wonderful for me. But I thought I heard you say we couldn't do just one, and I just want to understand that.
So, the Federal Labor Standards Act puts some parameters on what is considered a stipend, and we cannot stipend people at an hourly rate. So, that is why, if you look at the policy, it is actually $40 for a four-hour shift. And just for clarification, when we originally started talking, we were going to do 12-hour shifts, and the four hours is actually something that the volunteers had requested. But we have to be careful because, and, and it has been reported numerous times that it's a $10-an-hour stipend. And yeah, if you, you break it down, it is, but we cannot call it that. We have to call it a stipend for a shift, not an hourly rate. The other side of that is, is the money. So, that is based off of, if, if the payment that we were, that we were giving our volunteers exceeds 20% of what a career firefighter in this area would receive, it's no longer considered a stipend. So, they can only make a certain amount of money. The way that we did that was, we took the area, the, the averages from the area around us at a five-year salary. And the reason I used five years was because I wanted to throw these guys a little bit of a bone. And also, most of our guys that are participating have at least five years in the service. That's where the $14,000 comes from.
Okay. The only other question I really have is for Linglestown, I think. I've got a clear indication from Paxtonia and Colonial Park that you're ready for this to happen. At the beginning of your comments, you said that you're on board if it's rolled out correctly. So, I'm curious as to what your thoughts are on that.
Yeah, sure. And that's been my concern through the whole process. To summarize it in, in one sentence, I, it needs to come in a way to truly support the volunteers, which it's being presented that way right now as we're talking, so that, A, you keep that volunteer cadre you have happy, right? They don't get a paycheck. You know, they're there to do the right thing. They're there to provide a service for their community. They don't ask for payment. They don't ask for that. But they'll ask for an attaboy every once in a while. But they'll also ask to be the officer of that rig that they worked very hard to design and work, you know, and, and bring up to where it is. And, and that's why I say just, if this goes in the direction to truly support the volunteer system that we have and supplement it, which is needed, I don't see why we can't be on board with that. I think it wouldn't be smart to be against that, right? So, I said in a public meeting months back that any time I can put a qualified person on my fire truck, and I can continue doing what we're doing with it, I'm, I'm probably going to do that, you know. So, that's kind of where I'm at. President, if you have any other remarks?
Sure. I mean, our basis is home response. That is what we live and breathe off of right now. We have one live-in who's a student. But everybody else, we, out of our 26 active firefighters and officers, they all come from home. We do a four-hour shift here and there, and almost all of them have a family in Linglestown. So, to everybody's point here, you know, we are very committed to our community, very committed to our homes, very committed to our families. And one of the pieces that we see is that we want to make sure that, you know, people who have put in 20, 30, 40, 50 years into our organization, you know, even though they may not be fighting fire 50 years in the organization, they still get a say in the direction of what the fire service has been. And we've had some extensive conversations across this table, as well as the other table over here. And one of the ones that we had recently that stemmed out of even last week was just the structure of the fire service and what that organizational chart's going to look like. That has been something we've been asking and talking about for a better part, almost two years. We finally had a conversation. And I think, you know, again, not that we agree with everything, but I think we got walked away that we have a system that can work with implementation, where we said, okay, if everybody's going to have the same training standards, then it doesn't matter if you're a volunteer lieutenant or a career lieutenant. You have the same rank and structure based off your tenure in this Bureau of Fire. And generally, everybody agreed to this, right? You know, so we talked about, you know, if this is what our training policy is to become a driver, then this is what everybody's going to go through. We're going to have and hold the same standards, which creates equality within, I don't want to use the term air quotes, sorry, but, you know, workplace that, you know, creates harmony as opposed to division amongst the ranks, where we've all seen and heard horror stories from other departments where you got a great divide and rift between the career and the volunteers, and it runs out your volunteers, and now all of a sudden, you're stuck going, we got to hire 12 more. And next year, we got to hire 12 more. And then the next thing you know, you went from 12 to 54 in a matter of four years going, how did my budget go from a million to seven? Where, and the problem with this is, once you make that grand mistake, you can't go back and fix it. So, I hear what everybody's saying. I agree that we have to move forward with this in some respect, but I do applaud that there is some question and analytics that are going on to us, to the how and the why, so that we are hiring, to your point, good, qualified individuals that are willing to stay in this system. And B, how do we support and maintain this? Because one of the benefits that Linglestown does bring, Chief Fogg said it, we're four minutes slow. There are a lot of times we're getting out the door and they're getting on scene. But when you have a working fire in this township, everybody generally knows you're getting the engine, the truck, the tanker, and the air unit out of Linglestown. It might take you 15 minutes to get them there, but you're getting your full resources out of us because our, our members are still very committed to this, and they come out of the woodwork when it's important. So, I think that's a, something that you want to consider, that you don't run that out from a, again, like I said at the beginning of this, you know, inadvertently, reverently, you know, just run that, run that away, and now you're going, we need more, we need more, we need more. Is that, hopefully that answered your question, Mr. Vecchio?
That makes perfect sense. Thank you.
Any other questions by the board? John?
Not a question. I just want to say thank you very much for your time in this very informative session. I think we've taken enough of your time, but I genuinely appreciate it. So, thank you.
Very quickly, the three stations had a chance to speak to their concerns or their full support. You've heard from our Public Safety Department. Is there anything that we've not asked or any additional information we should have as we move forward to set goals, objectives, and the vision for the Bureau of Fire in Lower Paxton Township? No?
Yeah, I think, I, I just have one thing, I think. If you, if you look at the root of what we're talking about, we're asking tonight if there's a fire, is there fire protection in Lower Paxton Township? Take the emotional side out of it, take the requirements out of it, and the question is very simply, can we right now support guaranteed if there's a fire, somebody shows up? And we can't do that. So, I'll defer to what, you know, Supervisor Vecchio said. Is Linglestown on board? I have a question for everybody up front, and very simply, I would like a yes or no from the board. Are each of you on board committed to hiring career firefighters in this township to guarantee fire protection?
I think where the board is at is we're still learning. And I'm not sure that we're prepared to answer that question, Chief Fogg. I, I want to say yes, but I also want to say that we have this awesome responsibility. And whatever we decide in the next couple of months is going to, has the potential to completely restructure the fire service in Lower Paxton Township. And I think that we need to make certain that we're making the right decisions. You know, maybe the right answer is, is that we need to hire 12, as you suggested. So, I don't, I, I don't think it's fair to ask us to answer that question until we've done our due diligence. Or, the process that MRI laid out for us was meeting with a cross-section of the fire companies and then meeting with the public. And I think once we do that, we will be able to make that decision clearly. And I think maybe many people are leaning towards, as you guys have made clear, you need help, and we want to help you, okay? We just want to figure out the right way to do that. That's all. So, that's a fair question to ask.
I, I respect your...
I don't know if any of the other supervisors want to answer it yet, but I, I'm not, I'm not prepared to answer your question yet.
I respect the responsibility you believe you have, but I would argue that ours is greater because we're watching out for the life of the township.
No doubt.
And I, I would like a commitment from this board to hire firefighters to guarantee fire protection in this township. And I'll stay here all night and answer questions until we come to an answer. If, if you have an alternative, I'm all ears. But we don't have an alternative. We have a gap in coverage. We have lives at risk, and we're not addressing it. And we're kicking a can down the road projectively till I don't know when.
Respectfully, Chief Fogg, I disagree with you. I, I think we're learning, and I think we have that obligation to learn so that we can move into the future. I, I understand that you need help, and these guys tell me every day, you guys need help, and we want to provide it. But I just, your responsibility to keep the public safe is, is sacrosanct. It's the most important thing. We could never, ever thank you enough, compensate you enough for the work that you do for us. That, that's just, that's just the truth. And I don't know which one of you said, I think it was you, however, is, you know, no life is, is worth whatever it costs or something, and, and we're trying to balance the risk. And you say we balance the risk every day. And, and I think that's what this Board of Supervisors is trying to do, sir. We're trying to figure out where that, that line runs between the avoidance of risk and, and giving you the help that you need. And I assure you, at least for my part, I won't speak for anybody else, I will do what I believe is the right thing. And, and part of arriving at the answer is to what the right thing to do is, is having this education session and learning. Because without learning, we won't know how to, how to react. And, and I, I hope you understand that not giving you that commitment tonight is not in any way, any kind of slap towards the absolute outstanding work that you and your brethren have done. It's just that I don't think the Board of Supervisors is ready to answer that question yet. And I think, very honestly, again, going with the MRI report, cross-section of the fire service and the public, we've not met with the public yet. So, please allow us to follow the process. You know, we've got another simultaneous program where people are going to look at what we're going to pay these people and how we're going to compensate them, and what their benefits package and what their retirement package is going to look like. So, I think we're doing the right thing. And I'm sorry that we're not doing it fast enough for you, but I do commit to you that when we get to the answer, it'll be what we believe is the right answer. And that's, I think, any, all anybody can ask of us. And I apologize if it's not coming fast enough for you because I understand what you mean to the township. And I can't, I don't have the words, put it into words. I just don't. Thank you isn't enough.
Excuse me, Mr. McCormick. Chief Graham, how many firefighters did you tell me went through the various processes to be cleared this afternoon for hiring? What was that number?
You're talking about our current hiring process?
Yes.
Currently, we're, we had 25 apply. We're down to 20.
We're down to 20?
Correct.
That's 20 firefighters.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. So, we, we, you, you, you did that because the previous iteration of the board gave you the go-ahead to hire those firefighters.
That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
What's really impressive about that is, is that we were not able to tell them how much the money they were going to make in pay and what benefits they're going to, but they still applied. That's pretty impressive. Other things that we should have asked that didn't ask? I'm sorry.
I would say that I believe that hurt our recruitment efforts, but yes... I would say that I believe that hurt our recruitment efforts, but yes, we, the, what you got to understand about the fire service is, we're very dedicated people.
I understand that.
We have people that do it for free. This township has the opportunity to be the tip of the spear. We're doing really great things, and I think there's a lot of people watching what we're doing here. And I think that's why we got 25 good applicants, because they want to be a part of something great.
This is not directly related to the subject at hand, but could I ask, the people that are sitting here, is regionalization of the fire service a reasonable outcome of what we're beginning today? Does anybody have any opinion on that?
So I believe regionalization is an animal in itself. I come, my, my background, where I came from, was a regional department. There are good and there are bad. But what I can tell you is that when the MRI study came back, and there was reference in there about regionalization, the previous board said that they were not interested in looking that at all, so we have not even explored that, aside from the fact that I have all but daily correspondence with our partners in Susquehanna and in Swatara. And a lot of the things that we're doing are kind of a regional concept. Previous to this year, because I just have enough going on, and my commitment needs to be Lower Paxton, I was the chair of the County Standards Committee for the County Fire Chiefs Association. I still serve on the board, but I'm not chairing it anymore. And a lot of the work that we've done here in Lower Paxton, we've implemented essentially throughout the county. And we're making, you know, an impact at that level through the coordination with a lot of other chief officers. So there's, there's different ways to look at regionalization, and we're certainly involved in what's going on countywide. I, you know, I, there, that's a whole, it's a whole different conversation that the, the previous board was not interested in taking part in.
I am prepared to say that I do support a career volunteer model with one qualification. If we can do it in a way that it does not undermine our volunteers.
I second.
That's where I'll stay.
I can also commit to that.
I appreciate that.
Well, that's unanimous then, or nearly unanimous.
In regards to the combination, or I'm sorry, the regionalization, I don't think it's a bad idea, but I think we need to worry about Lower Paxton right now. And if we, if we hire for Lower Paxton and we protect this township, one of two things will happen around us, because the entire area is suffering. Either the other townships will also hire to protect their townships, or they'll ask to be part of the system that we invented, like they have with most of the policies we've already developed. And either one of them is a win, because quite frankly, if we have a fire, they'll be coming this way, and if they have a fire, we'll be going that way. But that's the only two ways it'll play out. We'll start a system, and they'll jump on board, or they'll start their own system. But either way, Lower Paxton is protected.
I asked that question, Chief Fogg, because you and I, when we met, you, you mentioned that, and we talked about it a little bit. I just wanted to get it out on the table for everyone else to hear. Anything else that we should know, gentlemen?
Can we have public comment?
Yeah, you wanted to say something, sir? Is there any public comment on this issue? Bill?
Good evening. I'll be very brief, but my name is Mike Iverson. I am the Fire Chief of Swatara Township, and I am also the President of the Dolphin County Fire Chiefs Association. I sat here for the last two hours, and I heard the exact same things that we hear in our township and throughout Dolphin County. I did take some notes. So Chief Graham mentioned he's in constant communication with, with us during the day, especially during the day. And I'm here to tell you that a lot of times during the week, there is multiple units from Swatara Township and Lower Paxton Township that are out of service at the same time, which is very scary considering we rely very heavily on Lower Paxton Township and vice versa. It's a disaster that's waiting to happen. We appreciate all the support that we do get from Lower Paxton. When your firefighters come to Swatara Township, they are ready to work. They do an excellent job. I want to address the career versus volunteer concern. Career firemen, if implemented the correct way, do not hurt the volunteers. Swatara Township has taken a similar approach. We have a stipend program that varies from, from yours. There's all types of different variations. But we decided to hire part-time firefighters first. And the way we did it was, there's three shifts available, or three positions available every day, seven to seven. When we went to hire them, I told our board that it's not going to fix our problem. It's going to fill some holes here and there. It's inconsistent. And you will have the same problem if you just hire drivers. A lot of times, our volunteers, we'll get more volunteers that station when we do have career staffing. Our career staffing helps train the volunteers. They help them get through their rookie books. They help do driver training. It really works well. We were one of the first ones in this area to be part-timers, so I, I like to say that we got a really good group of firefighters. We're on our third hiring phase right now, and we, we still don't have enough. We could probably hire 50 part-time firefighters. It's not going to be enough, because it's not consistent. The, when we hired them, the township handles all the pay. I would highly discourage you to put that on the fire companies. You heard them say it, they're already exhausted. That's a, that's a whole nother animal for them to try and manage that, let alone, you know, mixing that with running all their calls. I was a little, I'll say jealous, when the advertisement went out for career firefighters in Lower Paxton Township for full-time. That's a goal that we've been trying to obtain. And I say that, I'm also happy. I'm happy for the firemen here, Chief Graham and the director. But just like the volunteers, we are going to be competing for the same group of individuals. So the more people that get hired, whether it's here, Susquehanna, Swatara Township, that pool is going to continue to shrink, and you're going to have a hard time finding good people, because they're just, it's going to compete. And it's going to be a competition. It'll be a competition with, with, with pay, with benefits. You know, so I want to encourage you to listen to the volunteers, which, this is a great setting. And I want you to understand that it is not just here, and they're all saying the same thing, all over the county, all over the state. They need help. They're exhausted. We're trying to get there. And if you have any questions for me, you can leave my contact info. Chief Graham has it. You can contact me. So.
Thank you, Chief, for your comments. Appreciate it.
Jay Purdy, 4731 Duke Street. And sitting here listening tonight, and one of the cautions that went out was, we need time to learn. We need to learn this. Well, every day that you're learning, there's a chance that that day will be the day that nobody can respond from a station in the township. You need to, on this subject, you need to learn to expedite, because somebody could die two days from now because a truck can't get out. And if we can equate this, and I'm just giving this in terms of advice, I'm not attacking anyone. If we can put it in terms of military, I think the guys and ladies in this room have expressed that they're surrounded, and they need some answers. They need some relief as soon as you can. You can't leave them surrounded. So I would ask you that you expedite this. Put it on the front burner. Put, make it, however quickly you can move the process ahead. Thank you very much.
Mr. Purdy, thank you for your comments.
Bill Vinsker. Very quickly, I laid on your dais paper dealing with population. I was curious and really very proud that, as you, I think, are well aware, Linglestown, Paxtonia, and Colonial Park are part of a unique volunteer system, where we are the biggest municipality in the state with an all-volunteer service. I've heard different figures to back that up. With the help of the staff at Representative Joe Kirwin's office, I tried to get the newest figures for you as to where we are population-wise. Many of the figures are based on the 2020 census. Some of the figures of municipalities are newer. So what I've given you there on the sheet puts Lower Paxton Township at 15th largest municipality in the state of cities and townships, not counting boroughs, because they're all smaller. There are eight cities only out of 56 cities in Pennsylvania that are larger than us, and there are six townships out of 1,546 that are larger than us. We are number 15. So I wanted you to see that. There are some other interesting things there, too, that you can notice. For example, under townships, they're the smallest township in the state, East Keating Township in Clinton County, has seven people in its township. And there are other items there, too, you might find interesting. I would like to speak just very briefly, as I mentioned a little while ago, about the volunteer service. I am very proud to be a part of this army of blue that you are looking at, which is the backbone of the fire service in this township. There are some things about Linglestown, which I am very proud of. I am speaking about these things for myself and for my fire company only, but these are things that I don't hear people talk about. And Linglestown, I think, is in a rather unique position, and I would like you to know a couple of these things. First of all, we have three buildings. We operate with three buildings, one of which is devoted totally today to community activity. The other two buildings are our apparatus buildings. We have a total of 12 pieces of equipment. 12 pieces of equipment. There is no fire station in this county that has that much apparatus. In our total statistics from last year, from 2025, we had a total of 842 alarms, the least of the three of the township companies. Of those 842 alarms, we had an average of eight firefighters responding to those alarms. Eight firefighters, all volunteers, and two fire police. We have, in our operation, eight different facets of operation. It's typical with the volunteer fire company, they will have one, maybe, a pumper, or they'll have two, a rescue truck, or a tower truck, or a tanker. We have eight different facets, which, of our crew, these people need to be trained in order to operate these different eight facets, seven of which are connected to firefighting. We have a pumper. We have a ladder truck. We have a tanker. We have a rescue truck. We have a air light unit which responds all over central Pennsylvania. We have two chiefs' vehicles. We have a squad, and we have a forest fire crew. In addition to that, we have an auxiliary. They don't fight fire, but they support us, and they've been a part of us almost since we started in 1934. My concern is, we continue, as you're hearing, to back up the volunteers. Linglestown has huge support from the public, because we also do things for the public. We are very involved, all year long, with what the public is doing, and they support us when it comes time, especially for fundraising. So I am speaking just to support the idea that we must continue to support the volunteers in this, in this township. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vinsker. Any other public comment on this issue?
Joe Craig, 5309 Arnold Drive. Listening to a few things here. I am a member of Paxtonia, but I'm not going to speak related to the fire company directly. Little bit of a history of me. I've been in the fire service in central PA since the early 90s, mid 90s. I left central PA. I used to live in Swatara Township, was a life member at one of the fire companies there. Moved back to Lower Paxton Township about five years ago. Couple things that have been said here are concerning from the board. First thing is, you say you're learning, and it was brought up that this was passed in the budget last year. And I heard some people say, well, we're new board members. I mentioned to another board last year, it doesn't matter that you're new board members. The Lower Paxton Board of Directors passed the budget. You should be honoring that budget. Not coming back midway through the year, say, well, we need to learn about it. Why'd you pass, why'd the board pass the budget if the board did not learn about it? Yes, you may be new board members, and I understand you individually need to learn about it, but you should still also honor the respect of the board that preceded you in the passing of that budget. They're not asking for more people than what was passed. They're asking for what was passed. One thing that was said, and I just want to make sure, and I understand, and I'm sure the management wouldn't ensure of this, you say drivers, and I always worry about that, coming from political persons who are managing a township, because I've seen it brought up, oh, well, we can have road crew drivers drive the apparatus. They are driver operators. They're not just drivers. So I just want to make sure you understand, if you're going to put people in stations to be drivers, they're not just there to drive the truck and then not know what to do. So you, you don't want to take that advantage there. One thing to keep in mind, I've heard it brought up about police department, and how, back in the 50s, oh, you look like you'd be a good cop. Here, let me teach you how to write a ticket. That doesn't happen anymore, correct? They have to go through classes and those certifications. Those certifications are there. How many volunteer police officers do you have? How many volunteer police officers are there in this Commonwealth of Pennsylvania other than fire police? I don't think there's probably any. You have volunteer, the volunteer fire service, guess what? The volunteer fire services, volunteer firefighters have to put in hundreds of hours, over 100 hours, just to get the minimum standard to reach your firefighter one. Those are volunteer hours, taken away from family, and also work. They have to work their full-time jobs. So if you're, then you have your in-house training. And oh, by the way, that's just the basic standards. If you, if you ride a ladder truck, another 80 to 100-plus hours in aerial device and truck training. If you ride a rescue truck, add about 300 more hours of rescue training to get certain certifications. Even EMS is, very rarely is EMS volunteer anymore. Why is it that the fire service, when there's a past budget, that's already been passed, is the township now saying, well, we need to learn to keep you from being burned out before we commit to honoring a budget that this board passed? Whether it's these individuals, the Board of Lower Paxton Township passed that budget. So to sit there and say you can't commit to honoring the budget that was passed, that's not really very good stewardship of being on the board. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments. Thank you very much. We-
Oh, hang on a minute. We're going to save the best for last. So, sir, he asked you a question, and you've rounded about it, and told the rest of the board said that they support it, and then you jumped in alongside. said that they support it, and then you jumped in alongside. Why won't you answer his question?
What question are you asking?
Do you support the hiring of professional career firemen?
I can only speak for myself. I can't speak for the other board members.
I'm asking you the question again.
And I absolutely support having qualified firefighters available to fight fires, whether they're career or volunteer. And my only concern, as other people have said, is I support the implementation of career firefighters as long as there's no way that it, that it causes volunteers to leave our service. That's all.
That's not the goal at all. Hiring the career guys is going to supplement the volunteers. And as Chief Ibrison stated, when his career guys are there, his volunteer staffing hours go up.
Correct.
Okay. So just as long as we're on the same page here. So we are tired. We are exhausted. I've been doing this for thirty-two years. It's time to take a break. You have a chance to give us that break so I can continue to do what I love for another fifteen years, so I can fight fire with another fourth-generation Rodkey. But here we are, having a discussion on something that was passed that Mrs. Thompson said in the very beginning of this. So I'm just going to sum this up. You want to see what we go through on a day-to-day basis? I'll be at the firehouse tomorrow morning at eight. You can come along and do a ride-along, and you can see how exhausting this is. Thank you.
My name is Tim Murphy. I live at fifteen twenty-four Pine Hollow Road. No question about it, these guys are important. We need them. I was reminded of that two days ago when I witnessed a two-car crash on Route twenty-two, called nine-one-one, and along comes the police car, and right behind them was the fire truck. And those guys did a tremendous job cleaning up the road, taking care of the spilled oil, engine coolant, motor oil, you name it. And that's just a small part of the major job they do for the township. Supervisors, I commend you for taking this on. This is a major decision, no question about it. I've sat in this room over the last several years and heard discussions about a number of different topics, including the replacement of fire apparatus, and who was next in line, and how are they going to get coordinated among the three companies. This is a much bigger decision, and I understand why you want to be certain of what you're getting into and what you're getting the township into. As Mr. McCormick said early on, this is a decision that can affect the township for six years, maybe sixty years. So it's all very important. I'm happy to hear that you're going to have a public meeting, and I'll just throw in a couple of things that I would like to hear discussed at that meeting. The most obvious, from a taxpayer's standpoint, what is this going to do to our taxes? Not just this year, but over time. There was mentioned today about not knowing what benefit packages we're talking about or anything. All of those have to get factored into what the real costs are going to be over time. On the plus side, is this going to have any effect on our homeowner's insurance? Because we're going to have a change with the nature of our fire protection. I'm not saying it's going to be better or worse. I don't know. But if there is anything that can be offered along those lines, I'd appreciate hearing that. So I'll see you at the public meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and some of those issues you've raised are the issues that are giving us pause as we try to figure out how to roll this out. It's not a question of if we roll out a program or not. The question is how we roll it out and how we maximize the, not only maximize the effectiveness of it, but we build it. Again, our, the objective of the board is to establish goals, objectives, and a vision, and all we want to do is make sure that whatever we do is done so that it lasts that sixty years. I can't, and I'm sorry that I'm not supporting you well enough, the guy that questioned my integrity. I'm just trying to do the best job I can, and I'm making a decision for fifty-five thousand people and for three fire companies and a multitude of peoples who volunteer as firefighters that I value very, very much. So what you see as reluctance, is what you see as hesitation, is not that at all. It's a grasp of the enormity of the decision that we're about to make, and it's not only the firefighters that we want to, certainly you're the most important aspect of this, but we want to take into consideration the public as well as was brought up. And I'm sorry it's taking us longer than you want, but I think it's prudent and responsible for us to do that. That's all. So thank you. And I'm sorry if we're not doing it fast enough for you. Our intent is to do it right, not fast. Go ahead, sir.
My name's Grant Garland. I live at twenty-two twenty Parkway West. I joined the fire service in June of two thousand and two. I started at Linglestown, and I've moved all over the county because I like to follow the shiny objects and move when new opportunities arise. I've been an employee for the township of the Public Works Department for seventeen, and for the last ten, I've been the police department mechanic. I got to tell you, I've been exposed to a lot of different leadership types over the last, I don't know, twenty years of my life, in and out of the emergency services and in the public sector. I got to tell you, the two gentlemen sitting over there in white are the two finest leaders I've ever had the pleasure of being a part of, any kind of organization.
I think we agree with you.
I implore you, if all, if any of you sitting up there have not had the opportunity to look at their credentials, I beg you to do so. Do me a favor, Google Adam Khashiva. Look at the list of articles that have his name in it. I hope that their credentials are enough alone to make you feel confident in making the decision to pay firefighters in this township. I've got to say, what brought me back to Lower Paxton Township? I moved back here two years ago to help take care of my parents. Turns out they need to take care of me, but that's a whole nother story. I was the president at Grantville Volunteer Fire Company for two years and the vice president the year before that. I got tired of begging a township for help. The chicken barbecues, the yard sales, the soup sales, the spaghetti dinners. I would rather my firemen bring fire trucks to my house and get my kid out of the house than sell soup, spaghetti, and chicken barbecues. The volunteer fire department and the paid fire department's responsibility to the community is just that. It's just that. It is to protect your community. I hope you understand that. I know that there's varying opinions around here about what the volunteer fire department is supposed to do, and I understand when you're raising money, you have to be part of the community. No one's saying we're not being a part of the community, but the important part is to get qualified people there fast, especially when it's my nine-year-old or my twelve-year-old. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Is there other public comment? Seeing none, I want to give a hearty thank you for the vast amount of time you've dedicated to us this evening. I didn't know it was going to take that long. If you guys have anything to add afterwards, you know how to get in touch with us, email or phone numbers. I do want to say thank you to everyone in this room who's part of the fire service, and I understand that saying thank you is not enough, but you are appreciated, truly, deeply appreciated, and we will get answers. If we're ready to reconvene, we'll move on the agenda to the second presentation of Ordinance twenty-two-five-oh-one, the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance Amendment, and we have Director Zerbi and Mr. Garrett. Did I say that right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Good evening, supervisors. I think before I start with the, going in line with the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance update, I'm going to skip to Slide three, the overview, and explain, to just explain, why do we have to amend the zoning ordinances? Well, to ensure the ordinances remain relevant and effective, but, okay, what does that mean? And if you wanted to boil that down to a simple statement, it's, do our current land use regulations align with community needs? Do our current, does our zoning ordinance closely relate to current housing and use trends? And can our zoning ordinance effectively realize the goals and policies that have been set forth by our comprehensive plan? These are the reason why townships, boroughs, cities, every so often, every ten years potentially, have to review their zoning ordinances and make amendments to keep up with current trends.
I'm sorry, I need to interrupt. I've just gotten a message that says that the live streaming is not working. Oh, dear.
Supervisor Thompson, is your contact, are they talking about YouTube livestream or?
Yeah, it's working.
Or on the television?
Okay, all right.
Am I able to proceed?
Please continue.
Thank you. We also amend zoning ordinances due to changes in state and federal laws, court rulings, and those community needs often necessitate updates to zoning regulations, also to reduce legal risks and adapt to evolving land use patterns, basically to avoid being challenged for uses that are not provided for by the township. Without periodic revisions, the zoning ordinances could become outdated and hinder the community development. So to the process, how we got here. The research and background, we reviewed the two thousand and eighteen comprehensive plans recommendations. Well, what were the goals and objectives specific to zoning? They were to seek improved design and residential development, prioritize open space development in select areas, and housing to allow residents to age in place. We reviewed the existing ordinance and official map. Reviewing the existing ordinance came down to, okay, can this ordinance be amended, or are we looking at something that had to be repealed and replaced? Remember, it's been almost nineteen years since the last time our current ordinance has been amended, so it became clear that the path going forward was to repeal and replace the ordinance. Also, it's, we're identifying missing elements from the current ordinance. Okay, is that, how is our ordinance logically laid out? Can you, is it easily able to follow? Can you find all the information that's needed? Our definitions in our current zoning ordinance were scattered throughout the ordinance in different sections. Our guidance on administration and enforcement was lacking where applicants that were looking to apply for special exceptions or conditional uses would really have to refer to the municipality's planning code to get that language. With our current zoning ordinance, or the ordinance we're looking to have adopted, that language is all self-contained within the ordinance to provide the guidance that you would need to move forward with those specific uses. So the original draft article was a complete repeal and replace of the current ordinance, and the official zoning map was amended. The initial draft ordinance presentation to the public was in June of two thousand and twenty-four, and throughout that process, the official public review process was over eleven months due to public comment. Public comment was specifically to the proposed official map, and throughout the process, staff has made revisions to the official zoning map based on public input, which resulted in a total of three revisions throughout the process. The current zoning ordinance, the current ordinance that we're working with now was adopted in two thousand and six. Since the adoption in two thousand and six, uses have evolved that were not defined at the time. Examples are large-scale solar facilities, live-work units, and short-term rentals, we're just to name a few. I could go on and explain, and talk about agritourism, electric car charging stations, the list is pretty expansive at this point. So right now, we're looking to put the comprehensive plan into action. What does that mean? Well, based off the recommendations, it was to seek improved designs and new residential development. We deleted the residential cluster district and had it replaced with the R2 district. We discussed this throughout the process. This is a zoning district that the township was looking to move away from as a no-longer development option in favor of, certain residential districts had had enhanced architectural and landscaping features. We look to enhance our open space standards in the open space district. What that resulted in is we're looking at, open space lots can't be less than two acres in size. All proposed dwelling units have to be within three hundred feet of public recreation or a common open space, and we're looking to have, and trails have to be interconnected to those open spaces so residents can actually be able to use those spaces. Additionally, we've added the neighborhood design transitional development as an option. That would be the only real zoning district that's been added to the proposed zoning ordinance. We're looking to provide for redevelopment potential, expanded uses within the commercial districts. Well, how do we expand the use with the commercial districts? Well, for one, we have an increase of over four hundred definitions compared to the current ordinance. There's uses that we've had in the past that were not even contemplated, so when we get proposals, it made it difficult for the township to open up those doors for development. If you didn't have a definition for those uses, it's a use not provided for, or the applicant would have to provide for a conditional use. That's not the path you want to take. You want to have that information contained within your zoning ordinance so you can have the ability to approve those applications. We've also simplified our sign ordinance. This should be the, this should reduce the need for variances. Our current sign ordinances were based on specific building types within the township. Now it's based in three things. It's either a building is in the commercial district, it's a commercial use in a residential district, or it's a commercial use within the commercial district itself. There are restrictions in place for the signage regulations that should help our zoning hearing board going forward, reduce the need of variances, which now would, signage would be based on, now, I'm sorry, would be based on linear feet of total building instead of having only four signs per building, per building walls, which was a hindrance to majority of our commercial establishments within the township. Also, we have updated parking standards, which would also reduce the need for variances. The parking ratio requirements for those following uses for the parking standards have been reduced based on data provided by the Dolphin County Planning Commission. Restaurants, bars, grocery stores, retail stores greater than twenty thousand square feet, financial institutions and business offices. Those specific uses are based off of minimum parking requirements. Our ordinance, as we're looking to propose, bases, base most uses off two spaces per two hundred or three hundred square feet of gross floor area. These specific uses that I've mentioned here are one space per two thousand square feet within the zoning district. This will allow for development to not have to be so overparked. As you can see from this aerial image here, the size of the parking place, the parking, the parking lot at the Colonial Commons, and that it's being underutilized. Our current zoning ordinance overparks for commercial and restaurant uses. Accessory structure updates. Residential accessory buildings, sheds, and detached garages. Our current setbacks have increased from five feet to seven and a half feet. Maximum height is now dictated by the size of a lot. If a lot is two acres or larger, the size of a detached structure can be twenty feet. If you're less than two acres... If you're less than two acres and one acre, that maximum size is 15 feet, 15 feet in height. Our current ordinance set the current height at 25 feet, so when you had a small lot, that was maybe 10,000 square feet, and a detached garage was constructed that may have had a height of 25 feet, the scale was incorrect and would provide a burden to neighboring property owners. Fences. We have guidance in place, for one. The smooth side should be to the outside. You would be surprised how often this happens, where we get complaints from residents where a fence gets installed, and the smooth side, the resident that constructed the fence looks at the nice side, and the neighboring properties see the support to the fence itself. So now, we have guidance that tells you that that's not how you want to do that. Fences shall not obstruct driveways. Our current ordinance didn't contemplate that. Now it does. We now have the ability to ensure that there's safety measures in place when the fence gets installed in the front yard. Accessory dwelling units. This is a new use in the ordinance. It permits an accessory dwelling in any residential district. It can be attached or detached to the primary dwelling, and to have an accessory dwelling unit, the person that resides there must be related to the primary homeowner. There is no minimum floor area. Basically, you just need to have a kitchen, bathroom, and living space. Other new uses defined, short-term rentals. Short-term rentals are a special exception, and they're to be approved by the zoning hearing board in the conservation, agricultural, residential, and village districts. Tiny houses can be a principal or accessory dwelling. These permitted uses are in R1, R2, R3, and village districts. Tiny houses can also be modular homes, so we are, the modular parks that we've had now should be transitioning to tiny homes. I expect you'll be seeing this probably in the next couple of months here, pretty close to the township building. Solar facilities. They're defined as large energy production facility, a facility that produces electrical power for off-site use. This could be ground-mounted or roof-mounted, and the use needs a conditional approval by the Board of Supervisors. This use is only permitted in industrial districts. Our current zoning ordinance had no definition of solar facilities. It was a use that was not provided for, and if an applicant wanted to have a solar facility installed, you had to see conditional use approval for a use not provided for. Small solar energy systems. This is solely for onsite consumption. It's roofer-ground mounted, and it's permitted in all residential districts. We have our own set of standards associated with small solar systems, setbacks are 10 feet, and they are permitted by right use in the residential districts, as I've mentioned. Here is our proposed zoning changes map. It's probably not the best rendering, but this highlights the properties that have been, or the parcels that have been specifically proposed for rezoning. This has received recommendation of approval by the Planning Commission, and we're looking to have the map moving forward to the Board of Supervisors at the May 19 meeting.
Could you repeat that, Mr. Gerhart? You were turned away from the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. The proposed zoning changes map, this simply highlights the parcels that have been identified for rezoning within the township. This is not the proposed official zoning map, but simply a visual tool for our residents so you can see what parcels have been identified for rezoning. The proposed official zoning map that I have here on the screen, this map has been recommended by approval by our Planning Commission, and we're hoping to get the, seek approval from the Board of Supervisors at the May 19 public meeting. In closing for the presentation, I have information here regarding where you need to go to access the proposed ordinance and map. The proposed ordinance and map revision have been available throughout the process on the township website, and we have the links here provided so that you can view them at home if you want to get a few, if you want to view the zoning draft and map itself. If there's any questions for myself, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
I have a question.
Sure.
You made a comment that said you will be seeing this close to the township building, and I believe you were referring to tiny homes?
Tiny homes, that's correct.
Oh, how close, and where?
So, on Town Street, we had a lot that housed modular, had modular homes.
Yes.
The township had one of the modular homes demolished some years ago, and now there's a new owner that purchased those lots. That lot was suitable for three units, and the applicant has, wants to install three tiny homes at that location.
Okay, thank you.
It should be a major improvement for the community.
Okay, thank you.
What if the new zoning ordinance puts a residence property in a non-conforming use? For example, the shed setback. What if their current setback doesn't comply with the new ordinance? Is there a variance that they need to seek, or are they grandfathered in?
So, they're grandfathered in. Those regulations are laid out in the section of our ordinance for non-conforming structures, so that resident has that right in perpetuity to have a shed five feet away. If they want to expand the shed, they can expand the shed if they like, but they can't encroach any closer than five feet. But the right is there, like I said, in perpetuity.
Any other questions, board members? Nice job.
Thank you.
Moving on then, we'll talk about the first presentation of the ordinance 2505, amending the Lower Paxton Township Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map as adopted on August 8, 2018.
Okay, so what I have before you is what we're defining as our future land use map, and our comprehensive map, and our comprehensive plan is defined as our land use map. It was adopted in August of 2018. The land use map and the comprehensive plan is to provide guidance on future development in the township for the next 10 to 15 years. Now, as I want to remind the Board of Supervisors, there is no legal requirement to officially follow the comprehensive plan. The issue is, is that when the land use map was adopted, it was basically our township zoning map. Future zoning districts weren't contemplated. There were some changes to institutional districts that were proposed, and there was recommendations for open space, but there were no other recommendations for future land use. When the township went to move forward to make recommendations on the official zoning map, it put the land use map and zoning map in direct conflict. Well, with that conflict, that could potentially open the township up to challenges, meaning we have an area that's shown on the official zoning map as one district, the future land use, the land use map shows it as another, someone could challenge that, potentially sue the township, and it could be ruled invalid. So, the recommendation was that we need to, we needed to amend our land use map to reflect what our current zoning map would look like. The future land use map isn't exactly as our official zoning map. To the south, we've made recommendations for the, oh, let's see if I can zoom in on this here. Okay, here we are. For the Neighborhood Design District to the south is one of the recommendations that we have on the future land use map. Because there's one parcel on this map that is not shown on our official zoning map, is no issue, but given the amount of land that was rezoned on our official zoning map compared to what our land use map had in our comprehensive plan that was adopted in 2018, it could have opened the township up to some types of liability, which is what led us here today. So, with the land use map, we've made the changes to the map, and we've also added definitions for the Town Center District and the Neighborhood Design Zone while also removing the residential cluster districts, since that is no longer a use that will, that's a deleted use that no longer will be able to be utilized. Any questions?
Any questions by members of the board?
So, just for clarification, the residential cluster is now being substituted with an R2?
That is correct.
Is that just a name change, or is there a land use difference?
So, the residential medium-density district and the residential cluster district share the same use categories. Lots are the same district, allowed for the same type of dwelling units. The only difference was, was that the residential cluster district allowed for a clustering of homes. It was an open space development. The residential cluster district was popular. It was utilized, as you see in the township, we have Stray Winds Farms, Amber Fields, just to name a couple that are under the residential cluster district. Popular developments, not exactly the desired results the township wanted to utilize going forward.
Thank you for the clarification.
And just again, board members, for further clarification, as Mr. Garrett noted, both of these ordinances will be on your agenda for next Monday. Note the change of date, Monday, due to Election Day, for final adoption.
Thank you very much. Presentation was excellent. Appreciate it. Next, we'll come to the reorganization of the Board of Supervisors. I'm sorry? Sure, public comment.
Sir, could you, the microphone must have been shut off there. Can you?
Now we're on, okay. Tim Murphy, 1524 Pine Hollow Road. I had provided some written comment back in February because I couldn't make the Board of Supervisors meeting, and Mr. Gotchall did acknowledge that correspondence to me a couple of days afterwards, and explained that the zoning ordinance had been sent back to the Planning Commission because of some concerns that were expressed from Tri-County Planning Commission. So I guess this is the next iteration now? I have an additional comment that I hadn't thought of previously, and I want to focus on Section 103, Community Development Objectives. And this lists about 10 different objectives of providing this zoning ordinance for the township. The first one is to respect private property rights, and further down, another one of the objectives is to seek coordinated, I'm sorry, to promote compatibility between land uses. And the reason I focus on that particular thing is, in the existing zoning ordinance, the township has a carve-out where you give yourself an exemption from following the zoning ordinance. Sounds peculiar. I didn't find that same wording in the new ordinance, and I'd just like to have a clarification of whether or not I'm missing that.
I'm unfamiliar with the language that Mr. Murphy is referring to. I'd have to research it myself to double-check to see exactly what that would be within our current ordinance and our proposed ordinance.
That language was in the, is in the current ordinance, but it is not in the proposed ordinance.
The carve-out language?
The language that exempted the township from being required to follow the zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Amanda. Thank you, Amanda, for that clarification. I'm happy to hear that. I'm happy to hear that the township is going to be a more responsive and cooperative neighbor to those of us who have properties adjacent to township property. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Hearing none, I'll call on Chair Pro-Tim Morgan-Madden to conduct the reorganization of the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Supervisor. The next item on the agenda is the reorganization of the Board of Supervisors. If I could, is there any public comment before I take nominations? I will open the floor for a nomination for Chairman of the Board of Supervisors.
Is it a nomination or a mo?
It's a nomination first, then we'll...
Motion, okay.
Mm-hmm.
I nominate Supervisor Kurtz for chair.
There is a nomination on the table, or, excuse me, on the floor. Is there a second to that nomination?
I second that nomination.
Are there any additional nominations? Can I get a motion to close the nominations?
I motion to close the nominations.
Is there a second?
Second.
At this time, we'll vote on the nomination for Laura Kurtz to serve as Chairman of the Board of Supervisors. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries, excuse me, election carries, and Chairman Kurtz will now take over for the election appointment of the remaining officers.
Thank you, Solicitor Madden. We'll move on to the election of the Vice Chair of the Board, and I will open the floor for nominations for Vice Chair.
I nominate Supervisor McCormick.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair?
I motion to close the nomination.
Thank you. May I have a second? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. We'll now move on to the appointment of the Secretary of the Board. I'll open the floor for nominations. I'll make a nomination for Supervisor Najim to serve as Secretary of the Board. Is there a second?
Second.
I will make a motion to close the nominations. Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
We'll now move on to the appointment of the Treasurer of the Board. I will open the floor for nominations for the Treasurer of the Board. I will move to nominate Supervisor Thompson for Treasurer of the Board. May I have a second?
I second.
I will make a motion to close the nominations. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Finally, appointment of the Assistant Secretary Treasurer of the Board. I'll open the floor for nominations. I would like to nominate Supervisor Vecchio to serve as the Assistant Treasurer, Assistant Secretary of the Board. May I have a second?
I second.
I'll make a motion to close the nominations. Is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to announcements, are there any announcements of the Board Manager, Assistant Manager? Nope, seeing none. This meeting has gone on long enough. I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. We are now adjourned. We are now adjourned.
Don't you sign anything?
Yes, everyone has to sign. We need stuff signed. There's a bunch of documents back here. Just remind these folks.